All right, let's get started. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 15th, 2025, meeting of the City of Worcester Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Jordan Burke Powers and I will chair tonight's meeting. The meeting of the Worcester Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in a hybrid manner with both in-person and remote participation. As a preliminary matter for tonight's meeting, I would like to confirm board members and staff who are present. Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Board member Abramov.
I'm here.
Board member Cepanello.
Here.
Board member Cortez.
Here.
Board member Barnhagen.
Here.
Board member Sacco.
Here.
And Board member Torcono, it sounds like maybe not here, but take a chance, here. Okay. That means that we will, Board member Barnhagen and Sacco, be prepared as the alternates. Before we start, oh, excuse me, some staff. Amy Beth.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
I'm here.
All right, apologies. Before we start, a few housekeeping notes. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed from the City of Worcester website and the recording will be available for rebroadcast. This is a public meeting, which means both that is being recorded and the minutes will be taken and published at a later date. The public may participate remotely by calling 1-669-254-5252. I'll repeat that number. Access code 1-604-564634. Pound sign. Again, the access code is 1-604-564634. Pound sign. Or using the link shown on the screen. Once an item is called, there will be a brief presentation of the item, followed by any additional comments and clarifications from members of the city staff, and then an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on that item before we proceed to board discussion and action. To manage remote participation during our hybrid meetings.
Through the chair, Eric, talk on the phone. I was blocked by the host.
Oh, no worries, we got you. To manage remote participation during our hybrid meetings and prevent disruptions, all participants are automatically blocked from unmuting themselves, turning on their video or sending chat messages. For remote participants who would like to comment on an item on an agenda, we ask that you use the Raise Your Hand function feature in Zoom during the discussion of that item. If you are joined by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. Again, if you've joined by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. Staff will then call on members of the public one at a time and give them permission to unmute themselves. If you are joined by phone, you will then be able to unmute yourself by pressing *6. Please note the board appreciates brevity in your comments, both on the phone and definitely in person. To help with the process, we'll ask all speakers participating in person to use a microphone to please clearly identify yourselves each time you speak, and the first time you speak, please state your city, town, of residence for the record. To help maintain an orderly meeting, please address all comments and questions through the chair, that's me, rather than directly to any of the other speakers or applicants. Applicants should be aware that approvals are generally conditional. Decisions are typically signed by the board at the next meeting and filed with the city clerk the following day, beginning the appeal period. It is the applicant's responsibility to address any conditions of approval, and lack of doing so may result in delays or enforcement. Please contact the Planning Division with any questions. Any party aggrieved by decision of the board has the right of appeal under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17. There are a number of items in our agenda, actually, are there anything? There's nothing being postponed, right? Did I get that right? Okay, well, I'll skip this part. If there's, if anything gets, when discussion, if anything gets continued. So everything that's on the agenda is going to be discussed, but we might not make a decision tonight on something. If that's the case, please do contact the Planning Division to find out when the next hearing will be on that item, as this is the only time that you'll get an official notice. So if you got an official notice and you spoke and something gets continued, like we're still having a conversation in the next meeting or the meeting after that, you'll have to get on the Planning Board to find out when it'll be discussed. This is your only notice beforehand. I will suggest for the purposes of streamlining our meeting that Board members Cepanello offer to make any motions and that Board member Cortez second any such motions. In the event either member prefers not to do so, I simply ask you to identify another member to do so. All right, and with that, item number one is, item number one is 14 Emory Street. If the applicant could please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Donald O'Neill. I'm a lawyer here in Worcester, here this evening on behalf of Gold Star Builders in connection with this property at 14 Emory Street. What we are requesting is a special permit that would allow for the single-family attached use we're proposing for units that are considered attached units under the ordinance, but basically it's a townhouse-style proposal. The requirement overall for, in an RL7 zone, for a single-family attached unit requires 3,000 square feet per unit. We, in this case, total lot square footage is 12,000 square feet, so that's actually just 363 feet shy of the requirement under the ordinance. It is broken up into four separate lots, which would allow for, eliminate the need for condominium ownership and would allow for the sale of the units as individual units separated by a party wall. But the result of that division is that for each of the four lots, there's relief that's required. So with respect to Lot 1, I believe it's got 3,737 square feet, which is 737 more than is required. Lot 2 is, has 2,500 square feet, which is 500 or less. Lot 3 is the same, and in the case of Lot 4, it's 2,900 square feet, which would require 100 feet of relief. But as I indicated, overall, in some cases, there's excess area and other cases, there's less area than what's required, but the total square footage relief comes to 363 if it were considered as a single property. Likewise, in terms of the frontage, the frontage requirement for four units is 85 square feet. We have 124 square feet, not square feet, linear feet of frontage. So it has more than adequate frontage on Emory Street. We are not proposing to make any use of the side street, which is a private street and is in bad condition, but the building basically faces Emory Street and that would be the entrance point for us. With respect to the front yard setback, that's 15 feet required. We've got 28 feet. Side yard is 10 feet. We meet that requirement, and in the case of La Chapelle Street, it's 15 feet because it's considered an exterior side yard, but we qualify for that. Rear yard is 15 feet and we have 33 feet, and we are one story shy of the maximum building height, which would be three and a half stories. So the relief itself, we think that the area is appropriate for this type of development. There are other multifamilies in the area. There's certainly a number of single families and some duplexes, but in looking at the property, when you first came up to the property, one of the buildings I looked at had five meters, maybe that's four units and a landlord meter, at the end of the street, just to the right, there's sort of a cul-de-sac in that area that, not sure if those are duplexes or what they are, but it's newer buildings of a larger size than the original buildings that would have been in the area. We did, at the suggestion of staff, have a meeting with neighbors last week, and we met with about nine or 10 people, somewhere in that vicinity, and I can report to you basically that, and they will follow me, but everyone thought that it was too many units and that we should be looking at something more like a two-family was what the suggestion was, but a two-family in RL7 zone is 70 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet. We have 12,000 square feet and 124 feet of frontage, so, and that would not require any relief at all from the board. But I think overall, the requested relief, the other relief that was requested was the impervious coverage area for the front yard setback. Again, if you look at this property as a single property, the requirement is, has to be under 50%, and in fact, if you look at it considering the two exterior units, we're at 49%. The two interior units actually exceed that when they're viewed in isolation, but that's generally always the case with a townhouse because it's virtually impossible to comply with that provision, and it's also virtually impossible to meet the driveway setback requirements, which typically require three feet of separation from the property line. And these units are built on a zero, building is a zero requirement in terms of the interior side yard setback, so it makes very difficult to comply with those, but I think those are, that would be true in any situation. So we feel that the relief that we're requesting is reasonable. There is ledge on the site. If anyone had been up there, probably observed that, which is going to be an added expense to the development of this location, and we really do feel that we need to get four units at this location to cover that added expense and also feel that the building actually sits on a lot and has sufficient area for what we're proposing. I did look at the conditions. There are nine conditions on Page 5 and 6. Have no problem with the conditions, and there are, I believe, four waivers on Page 6. I would request those waivers and I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. City staff.
Through the chair, this is Amy Beth Lee for the Planning Division. 14 Emory Street is located in an RL7 zoning district and presently on-premise is a vacant lot with a foundation from a previously raised structure. The applicant is seeking to divide the property into four lots and construct four single-family attached dwellings on each newly created lot. The subject property is a corner lot on Emory Street and La Chapelle Street. The property has approximately 11,637 square feet of lot area and approximately 124.15 feet of frontage along Emory Street, and as indicated, La Chapelle Street is an unimproved private road. The applicant is seeking the following zoning relief. So for Lot 1, well, for every lot, they are seeking a special permit to allow the single-family attached dwelling use in an RL7 zone. On Lot 2, they're seeking relief of 500 square feet from the 3,000 square foot minimum lot area, and also to modify the parking and dimensional layouts and landscaping requirements for the parking setback. The residential driveways need to be set back a minimum of three feet from all boundary lines. As indicated, there's a zero lot line, so that's not possible. Lot 3 is actually the same exact relief as Lot 2 for the 500 square feet of the lot area and the parking dimensional setback relief. And then for Lot 4, they're seeking relief for 100 square feet from the 3,000 square foot minimum lot area. So I do want to point out that in our staff memo, there was an error in our by right alternatives, because we did indicate that three-family or a three-family attached, they could have done either one of those, but they would have needed a special permit for those as well in the RL7 zone, so that is not a by right option. And we just wanted the applicant to kind of explain, they indicated no improvements to La Chapelle Street, as indicated, so we just want to understand and appreciate how work will be completed without disturbing the right of way in La Chapelle Street. And additionally, this item will need site plan approval from the Planning Board, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Is anyone here for 14 Emory Street? Great, if you are, just please come forward, state your name, city, or town of residence, and just put your comments to me. Thank you very much.
My name's Stephen Manna. I live on that very bad La Chapelle Street. I've been up there for 37 years now, and in response to the proposal by Gold Star Builders, I was under the impression that the lot itself was only zoned for single and two-family homes. We did have a meeting Wednesday with the builder and his lawyer, and the 10 people that were there were all opposed to the proposed construction citing that it would kind of ruin the character of our neighborhood, which is single-family houses and duplexes. The only multifamily house that I see is at the corner of Arcadia in Emory, and that house, if I'm not mistaken, has been, was grandfathered in. It was a multi-unit house. The winters up there would be an issue. They're horrible right now with four units there with, say, two cars per unit backing out into Emory Street, which is only 25 feet wide, would really cause havoc in our neighborhood, and it's just not a good fit, for our opinion, and my neighbors will concur that we would, we're certainly open to new construction, but we'd like to see a duplex there instead of a four-unit mini apartment complex, I would call it, in the middle of our neighborhood. And that's pretty much our gripe, and we hope that we show some consideration for the neighborhoods. And another thing about the ledge there, it is all ledge there, and we're concerned with the foundations of our house, if you're going to have to blast all of that. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to worry about how much money it's going to cost them to blast it. I mean, it's not, that's not a concern of ours, but we still think it's not a good fit for our neighborhood. It would ruin the character of our neighborhood, strain the infrastructure that we have there as now, and it's just, I guess I said everything I wanted to say. It's just, it's not a good fit for us, and we hope that they would take that under consideration for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, like to speak. Just state your name and city or town of residence.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bennett, last name Amor, and I live on La Chapelle Street. I'm from Worcester, and basically the area is Grafton Street, whatever. I mainly oppose because we have little kids in the neighborhood, there's no sidewalk, and it's kind of like a dead end, which they have a little kind of rotary right there so they play over there. So we can't really say who's going to live there, how many cars, and what's going to happen, especially if the kids are playing. And the street isn't that big to have even two cars going by each other. You're going to kind of figure out, give each other some space. Also, we know that he did put up some construction there years ago, and I believe the foundations and stuff were even leaking, I believe, and left it for neighbors to fix them. So for me personally, this is not a person I trust to build in my neighborhood, seriously. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Just state your name and city of residence, please.
Pauline Legore, Worcester, Mass. I just want to add, you know, you're taking a street of probably, you know, five or six single units, and you're going to add eight more, essentially, or essentially eight people, essentially doubling the number of people living on this street, so the traffic is going to double. You know, you have the units at the end in the cul-de-sac, but there's really no, like he said, there's a bunch of kids that play at the end in the little roundabout. The street is very narrow. I have a driveway that fits two cars, but if I have people over, you're going to park on the street. If these people have guests, they have nowhere to park. Are they going to park in front of my house because I'm directly next door? My neighbor is across the street. Are they going to park in front of his house? In the winter, there's nowhere for them to park because our side of the, our side of the street is where the parking ban is. So there's really nowhere for them to park if they have visitors, or, you know, these are two, three-bedroom units they're going to put up, but they have a two-car garage. There's no additional space. There's not enough parking on this street. That's really it.
My name is Michael Adutjani. My issue is, I have young kids, I have three kids. They play around the neighborhood, and my concern is that large structure that he's going to put there, and we don't know how many people that are going to live there. So I'm just concerned about my kids, and this guy, I bought the house from him, I have all kinds of issues, cracked basements, electrical issues, and people that bought the same unit, they have the same kind of problem. So I kind of don't trust this guy to build that structure in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yep, come on forward. Just state your name, city of residence.
Hi, my name is Mohammed. I am right next to Mike. I got three kids too. My oldest is 10. They play around over there, but like somebody mentioned, whenever they have like guests or something, the street is totally blocked. With four more houses, that's two cars per house, as you can imagine, plus not saying that they might have little kids, but they might have older kids who also drive, you know? That's just adding cars, and probably I would say 5% to 10% of people who use their garage actually to store cars, but most of them get, were guests and storage, so it'll be on the street. So basically, my point is, it's going to get very congested with especially four houses there with the kids going around, so that's just my concern, like just too small space for four houses there. Plus, like Mike mentioned, my house too, we have cracks in the basement, we have cracks in the wall upstairs, so a bit shoddy. We had electrical problems, AC problems already twice within five, 10 years, so that's my concern.
Can you just confirm you're Worcester?
Oh, yes, Worcester, Rungellers Street.
Yeah, next door is not technically a city of residence. I gotta, I just gotta make sure we get it for the record. Thank you very much. Is anybody online for 14 Emory Street? You can just use the Raise Your Hand function. There is somebody? All right, thank you very much, Amy Beth.
We have one person that has raised their hand. Gianni, I've just asked you to unmute. I believe that's *6 to unmute.
Yes, if you're on the phone, it's *6 to unmute.
*6. I don't know how I do that.
You, we can hear you, so I think it's worse.
Oh, you can hear me, oh, okay, great.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so I'm at 5 Benoit, pretty much across the street from the property, and again, it's just going to be so congested in the area with four more units, potentially eight to 10, 12 cars with kids, and it just, it's not the neighborhood that can, you know, accommodate this type of structure where we're at. It's just the roads are narrow, like Benny was saying, you know, people trying to go up La Chapelle and down, you have to pull over to the side of the road to let a car go by. It's just, it's really not the area for this type of structure, and I agree with everything everybody's previously said.
Okay, thank you so much.
Could I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, please do, yes.
Yeah, briefly. So Emory Street is a public street. It's a 50-foot layout. It seems to be in pretty good condition when I drove it, and in terms of the parking requirement, we meet the parking requirement. We do have two-car garage, and also, I think, there's probably room for some additional parking in front of the garages as well, whether that's, doesn't, parking requirement has to be restricted in that fashion, but we don't see that we would be creating a parking issue any different than if it were, you know, a single-family or a two-family or anything else. And in terms of the use of La Chapelle Street, as I said previously, we're not proposing to use that in any fashion at all, because it's not, it's not the access to the property and it's not needed and have no plans to make any use of it.
We'll start with board comment, and then if there's, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you and the applicant accordingly. So I guess I'll say, first, calling La Chapelle a street is doing a lot of work for what is like a dirt path at best. It is, it is, so I think, and if any, if anything were to move forward, just something in writing, I think the city is looking for something to say, like, how do you plan to actually build this without using La Chapelle, because it is not a street. It's like dirt road. For myself, I guess I'll say, I, it is, the street itself is a normal street. I don't know, it looks like my street. We, we're all normal people up here. We all live in the City of Worcester, and Emory Street looks like my street in terms of length. We have way more people and cars on it than that, and we all make it manage, and so I'm never like terribly, it's never, it's never helpful to say like, people might come by or it might be hard to find parking. Sometimes people have parties and it's hard to find parking on my street. Like, we live in a city, I don't know, that's not the most effective, the most effective thing. That being said, I do think, I'm curious about how we got to four units, four units for this property size is a lot of units. Like, for sure, there are duplexes on this, in this neighborhood and in this street. You go up, there's not far to get to duplexes. You're, you know, there's three, it's certainly, I think you probably have enough area for some form of three, although again, you get into what the city is pointing out, which you'd still need to come before us for some sort of, probably to get there. I definitely wouldn't encourage like three single families, right? That's a lot more request for, really, from us. So I'm, I'm curious how you got like four on this size, considering La Chapelle is not passable really, and, and sort of with everything else there feels like a lot to me, speaking for myself, so I'm curious sort of like, have you looked at alternatives for, for size? I know the ledge there is a part of it as well. I have, I was out there, I saw that, I had that same thought, so I'm also curious about it, and the planning, if you go to the, if you get to the planning, they would also have those same questions. So that's sort of my only thought about the, about the application before us.
Well, you could, I mean, you could, you could probably do a four-unit multifamily building, which is, I would say is probably even less, would be viewed by the neighbors as even less in keeping with the type of use that they're proposing. You know, with the, what, the townhouse-style development does allow for separate sales, and in fact, that's what would happen, and so I think it would be, at all likelihood, owner-occupied units, which is, I think, sort of consistent with what I understand that people are, view their own houses as. It's just that there are four of them. And I would point out that, again, the dimensional relief that's sought is pretty minor compared to most projects these days in terms of what they require, and it is... And it is, it is, it's a good-sized lot, and I think that the density is, is such that the, the only way to create additional housing in the city is to allow for some situations such as this, where we're, we're literally less than 400 square feet from the total, which would be required. I mean, if we kept it as a single building, I'd be looking for 363 square feet of relief. And I don't believe we would, would have to get the, still need a special permit for the use, but, but I, I think most of the driveway issues would go away as well. So I understand that the, the concern that people have, that they think it's too much, but it, that's, the ordinance doesn't seem to say that it's, that it's too much. You know, within a little bit of flexibility that is generally required in, in most cases, almost, that come before the board. But I do, I do understand the, the neighbors' position as well, and I, I guess our position just is that we don't feel that our, our request is outrageous in any way.
Board member Bromoff.
Through the chair. Thank you for that. So my first question was, are these going to be sold as individual units? And I guess the answer is yes. So owner-occupied is better, but we can't be sure, be owner-occupied, someone could buy it and rent it. And then it does seem like a lot for that, pretty dense use of that lot, but I'm, I'm interested in the, the buy-right alternatives. So if I understand, maybe the city can clarify this to me, they, without any special approval, they could put a duplex on this lot, and each side of the duplex could have an ADU. So is that correct?
Yes, technically, yes.
Right, so they could effectively have two, two families, right, on the lot, which is a four-family. It's a little less intensive a use, but, at, at least in my opinion, but it comes very close in the law to what you're proposing. So I, I need to hear from other people and think about this a little bit more.
Yeah, and all I, if I could add to that, it's, and if you did do an ADU, there's no parking requirement, the, the structure can be built, you know, up to five feet from the property line. I mean, there, there are actually more controls doing it the way we're proposing than there would be if, if you went strictly the buy-right route.
And a question for the city, is there, if, if you add an ADU, does it require more parking?
No. No, parking is not required if there's an ADU on the property.
So if they built a duplex with, each with its own ADU, they would only be required to have two parking spaces per unit?
That is correct.
Whereas in this case, are there two, two spaces for each unit in the garage?
Yes.
Plus whatever space in the driveway outside?
Correct.
Whether technically that's allowed to use or not. People will use it in the driveway, okay. So it's clear for me what some of the issues are. I'd like to hear from the other board members.
Board member Campanello.
Through the chair. At first pass, you know, I, I definitely side with the neighbors. I think especially six people coming forward and, and saying that this is too big for this lot, that's, was my first initial reaction to it. However, there's been very compelling arguments from the applicant, from the board regarding ADUs, but I, it still doesn't overcome my feeling that this is, is too big for that lot, at least by one unit. I know that three would require our approval. The duplex, to me, makes more sense and, and fits this lot. There is the ADU argument, I'm just not sure how practical that is in, in actually executing. So my feelings at this moment, and I'm willing to discuss more with the board, but that it's at least one unit too much for this space.
Board member Cortez.
Through the chair. It is obvious, based on what I'm hearing, not only from my member colleagues of the board in here, and the others pointing at one particular concern, and, or, or, or one, one of the, the, the things that should be conceded, and that is the size. It, 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 it's the size of, we're trying to pack in a, in a lot, and it's, you may say the lot is big enough, but it's not big enough for what they're proposing. So therefore, you're trying to pack whatever you would like to have, so you would have a, a better profit on the, on, on the long run, now taking in consideration the impact that would have to the neighborhood. And that is the reason why you have to ask for, for a, a whole number of variances in here to pack, and, and that is, that is a small lot for the project. So I'm in line, in agreement, that whatever you ask conceded, whether, whether the suggestions, suggestions of use or something, whatever you come up, but not the size of a project would fit in that lot. And that is, I, I, I'm not, I, I don't think that, that, you know, it's good for the neighborhood, it's good for anyone.
I'm going to go board member Barnhagen, and then I'll go to you, board member Torcono, online afterwards. Go ahead, board, board member Barnhagen.
Thank you, through the chair. I am also concerned with the density of this, and I understand the position that, well, we're not really asking for that much, if you look at the total numbers as far as the variances are concerned. But the fact is, you are before this board asking for relief. And I think the context of the neighborhood and the houses around the proposed development are also important to keep in consideration. And my thought when going to the site was, a, a clear impression came to me with that the four units packed into the square, it's basically a dead end, because you really can't go up La Chapelle. Just seemed like a lot. And I understand the whole buy-right, you know, argument there. You always have to balance what the applicant could do by right with what they're asking for. Is it better or is it worse? There's a pros and cons. Like, sometimes, you know, you, you, you know, you have to be careful when, when considering these things, because sometimes the buy-right alternative is worse than what you would get from, through the board. But in this case, I feel like the buy-right alternative is not worse. I feel like that's probably more appropriate for this neighborhood, even with ADUs. I think, I share board member Campanello's view, that I'm not sure how many ADUs really are going to be implemented, even though Worcester is trying to encourage them. But I think what would be there would be a duplex, and I feel like a duplex is much more appropriate for this particular lot and this particular neighborhood, especially given all the neighbors' concerns that were raised tonight. So that's my thought.
Board member Torcono.
Well, I guess enough has been said already, so four units is a stretch. I'm not comfortable with that, and the neighbors have demonstrated their concerns, and I don't think I'm in favor of the four units, too much density.
Board member Sacco.
Through the chair, I think, oh, he's still there, hold on one minute.
Yeah, it looks like he's trying to talk, maybe? It's like waiting for a voice from heaven.
Matt, go ahead and unmute.
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep, sorry what they got, I don't know what happened, but not to reiterate too much what the board already said, it just feels very congested to me. Just, that's all I'll say for now. Everyone kind of hit it right now, right in the head.
Okay. Board member Bromoff, you sort of wanted to, do you want to say anything else, or you feel like people have said it?
Just, yes, thank you. Through the chair. I, I see that you're looking for special permits to modify parking dimensional layout and our landscaping requirements, loading requirements, or the number, number of required parking spaces. What are those?
Well, you're supposed to have a three-foot setback from the, from the property line. I think we have two and a half feet on one, and about 1.3 feet on one of the others. But it's, it's just the setback of the, from the driveway from the property line. So the, so the relief is for basically the difference between three feet and a foot, foot and a half, or two and a half feet. And the other is the...
From the street?
No, no, interior to, to the property.
To the plot, to the line, so it's like the, the driveway has to be buffered, and there's not enough buffer because of the...
You can't put the, put the driveway right on the property line anymore. There's supposed to be a three-foot setback. So when you have a, a townhouse, makes it very difficult for the two middle units to maintain, otherwise you end up with a six-foot wide...
A separation between their driveways?
Grass strip.
Yep.
Between the driveways.
So wouldn't that just require for lot two and three, I assume those, the middle?
Two, two and three, and I think, I think four might also be because of the way the driveway is, a little bit too close to the other property line.
Yeah, okay, I understand it, thank you.
And the, and the other one is, is the impervious coverage cap, which is not supposed to be more than 50%. So again, with respect to the two middle units, it's more than 50%, but the two outside units have, have, have less than that, which compensate. So I, I, I can count, and I wanted to maybe suggest to the board to see if the board would be, allow for a continuance to the next meeting, and I think that we would take a look at, at three units. I mean, two units we can do by right, and we've got, you know, quite a bit of land left over. It's too big, it's, I'd say it's too big for a, for a two-family, maybe too small for, for four, but I think maybe three is something which would certainly allow for, you know, our proposed use with some room left over that would, could also be more available in terms of the overall density for the neighbors.
Okay, I look, I, I look, I, my initial impulse is to say that I agree, but I look forward to seeing it before I make a final decision on it. So I'm open to a continuance, as the board is open to it. I'll take a proposal for a continuance to the October 6th board meeting with the associated grant deadlines. Is there a motion?
Through the chair, before...
Yes, please.
Before board member Campanello makes that motion. I just want to clarify what attorney O'Neill said, and for the record, that staff did miss the additional relief under that special permit for the modification of the loading landscaping for that impervious. Also, it is the relief for the impervious coverage for the front yard, so we will add that for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Through the chair, before I make that motion, could we poll the board to see if they'd like to see the three units, or if they're more leaning to the buy-right, and because we wouldn't want to...
That's a great point.
At least any time.
Yeah, what are people's thoughts about changes, seeing, seeing a proposal?
Through the chair. I don't think we have to propose anything unless you, you're sure you're going to approve it. I want to see what they're going to come up with first.
Okay.
Because I can say I want two units. Are they going to do two units or one unit?
Yeah, good point. So board member Torcono wants to see actually what's there, and then make a decision, how to make a proposal. I'm curious of other people's thoughts. I think that's fair.
Through the chair. I'm definitely in, in, in agreement for continuance, so they are, so you have a chance to, you know, review what new plan you want to propose. Definitely is either three or two. That's, that's something that most likely would go by here.
Yep, board member Bromoff.
Through the chair. Well, today I would say that I, I would prefer three or four, but I'd like to see, you know, a, a physical presentation in front of us and decide based on what we're presented with, not try to speculate at...
I agree.
You know, all the different variants, you know, variables. I think it's too speculative.
I agree completely. I agree completely, yeah. All right, sounds like we have some, we have some marching orders.
Then I'd like to make a motion to continue 14 Emory Street.
Is there a second?
Sure move.
On the motion, board member Bromoff?
Yes.
Board member Campanello?
Yes.
Board member Cortez?
Yes.
Board member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Okay, so for the residents, what will happen is, they'll get an opportunity to make revised plans. Please get the number of somebody from the planning division, so you can call them before the next meeting. They might say, actually, we're not ready on October 6th, we want to go to October 27th. Just check in beforehand to get a sense of where they are in that process. And if you have any more thoughts or concerns, obviously you can see we take them seriously, so thank you very much for your time and just let us know. The other way to do that is you can also send an email or call them, and they'll communicate that to the board. So thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is number two, is 304 Lovell Street.
Evening, board members. My name's attorney Justin Rafelson. I represent the applicant.
Philip Massid.
And the proposal that you have in front of you, proposal that you have in front of you is a proposal for a four-family structure on Lovell Street. We are currently seeking a variance for square footage, frontage, side yard setbacks, and parking, and a special permit for the multifamily unit. Currently, there is a multifamily unit on the property presently. The street itself is densely packed with multifamily properties, so the character of the neighborhood would not be substantially altered. Furthermore, we are proposing a parking lot. Currently, there is an existing lot there, and what we are proposing to do is essentially deed over a right-of-way from one property to the other, and there will be a parking lot that basically severs the two properties where the cars can go parked. We don't believe that this is going to stray too far from what the neighborhood currently looks like, given the fact that there are a substantial amount of multifamilies presently on that street. We don't believe that it's going to increase parking by that much. There will be plus or minus eight more cars going up and down the street, and the parking lot that's proposed will do a good job in mitigating the issues of people parking on the street, so there will be plenty of room for all of those cars. My client can go a little bit more into the design of the property?
So since we are searching for such relief with the square footage, we designed a small building, a narrow building, long, to accommodate the, the relief that we need. We do have two parking spaces per unit, ample room for snow storage, bicycle storage, and all that. I believe we addressed all the concerns during the earlier meetings. Let me know.
Okay, thank you so much, city.
Through the chair, this is Rose Russell in the planning division. So I can give you a brief overview. So today at the site, at 304 Lovell Street is a three-family, multifamily building. It's a pretty large lot, it's a little over 14,000 square feet, and we're in the RL7 zoning district. So the applicant's seeking to divide the lot and construct a four-unit multifamily dwelling on the new lot to the south. A special permit is required in the RL7 district to allow a low-rise multifamily. It's two stories, but it is four units, so it brings them into the multifamily category. So they're seeking a special permit for the use. They're also seeking a special permit to modify parking dimensional layout requirements. So the way they're proposing this, they're proposing a common driveway, so... So the way they're proposing this, they're proposing a common driveway, so one driveway to serve both, all seven units together, so a total of 14 parking spaces are provided, two per unit through this configuration, but the way they have it laid out, the property line runs right over all the parking spaces on the southern parking aisle. And because the parking spaces are not located on either lot wholly, they're seeking parking variances for both lots and through the special permit, because parking is required to be set back five feet from the property line on either direction. So both lots are seeking the special permit to allow no landscape buffer to be provided. They're also providing some parking spaces in the front yard, which is prohibited without the grants of a special permit. And then for parking relief, so eight spaces are required on the southern new, new multifamily that's proposed, and then four are required to be varied on the existing three-family. All these spaces functionally exist, but they have to be provided on the lot that they are to serve. So they're seeking relief for that, even though they are provided. And then, last but not least, they're seeking a two-and-a-half-foot side yard setback on both the north, north and the south side of the multifamily dwelling. They're seeing 35 feet of frontage from the 80-foot requirement for the, excuse me, for the proposed four, four-unit multifamily, and then relief of 7,309.90 square feet from the 13,000 square foot requirement for the four-unit multifamily. So the lot to the north complies with frontage and lot area, the way they're drawing the lot lines, the lot to the south will need frontage and lot area. So we had a couple different conditions of approval. We had asked that the applicant eliminate the parking in the front yard. They would be able to do this through the special permit they're seeking, or they've already applied for the zoning relief, because those spaces can't be counted for that lot, so we asked that they just eliminate those. They're providing as much as they need, you know, we'd be comfortable with a reduction in spaces below that two-per-dwelling unit, and they could landscape that area. We really just try to keep parking out of the front yard if we can. They have a pretty large parking facility they're constructing, so I would just like to make sure the applicant's comfortable with that, it's one of our recommendations. We had asked for some additional landscaping along the front yard. We had asked that they provide a walkway around the building. I think that actually may be depicted on this plan, but we just asked that they install some curb stops along the building, just because the, how close the parking spaces are to the building itself. We had asked that they provide some updates to their stormwater plan, that they provide a stormwater report. And then finally, just to talk about architecture a little bit, the plans we received, like they said, it's a short, more of a long building. I think it's two units on each side, on each level. We feel that they could improve the architecture a little bit. They're not showing the porches on the front or the porches on the back, the decks, so it's a little tough to imagine it right now. All we kind of see is a box. So we'd like to see those elements added. They're shown on the civil plan, they're just not shown on the architectural plan. And in addition to that, we just asked that they consider improving the architectural itself, dormers, a different roof style, porches, variation in sidings or textures, or really, they could just consider, they're seeking a special permit for the use, and for a low-rise multifamily, you're allowed to go up to three stories, so they could build up and reduce the building footprint on the lot itself, preserve some more space for open space for residents. So we think they just, if they want to go for a low-rise multifamily, we think they have other options that they could consider on the site. But this is what we have in front of us, we're just hoping, something to consider. So if they could address that, and then just for other approvals that would be required, they are required to submit a notice of intent through the Conservation Commission, and they would be required to submit a definitive frontage subdivision plan to subdivide a lot without adequate frontage through the Planning Board. And then, lastly, I'll just say, by right, the applicant doesn't have any options here. The lot in RL7 does not have sufficient lot area. The most they could do by right is add an ADU, so there's not really any other options for consideration by right. So I'll leave it there, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Sounds like you have some updates for us.
I believe the architectural plans are updated.
If you'd like to bring them forward and then make sure you, they get a digital copy for the city.
Thank you.
While we're taking a look at it, have you had a chance to look at the, the recommendations? And if so, are they amenable to the applicant?
Yes, I can, no problem with any of them.
All right. I'm going to go this way, and then I'm going to, I guess I'll go this way first, since they talk first, and then we'll come back this way. I, so just to clarify for folks who are, just to understand what's happening, there is, they are proposing enough parking spaces, but because of the, because of the line, it's not credited to either of the properties, so they have to come before us as if they have no parking, but in fact, they're, they're asking for, for, they're not, they actually don't have it. The city is actually asking that they reduce the number of parking spaces by two, so that would be, that there'd be two less than two per unit, so that there would be more additional landscaping in the front. So when the board is considering this application, I would love for you to also put together your thoughts on that piece. But before I do that, I'll ask for anybody from the public to come forward at 304 Lavelle Street. I think I said it wrong before, I don't know how to say it. Yes, please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, Francisco Ortiz, Worcester. I'm actually in front of that, that big lot where they're trying to do the building, and right now they have about 10 to 12 cars that, that belong to that unit, so, I mean, they're talking about 14 parking, but they already have 12 spaces, and they, the density on this, this neighborhood is packed, and they're just trying to pack, like he said before, a building into a, they're just trying to gain money on this, not, they're not really concerned about, in my opinion, they're not really concerned about the shortage of housing here, because, I mean, it's, it's, when the market is good, that's when they try to build it. But I'm opposing it because of the parking, it's, it's a small street, one-way. That area right there is the lowest point, so all the rain goes in there, we get, sometimes we get flooded, there's issues with the sewer, and then with these new four units, we're going to have a lot of issues there, and it's just not good for the neighborhood. And it's, it's like four other multi-units that he's speaking about, and again, if, if, which I bring next time if you need it. I have to call 311 all the time because I can't leave my driveway, because his cars block in, usually from that building or the other building on the side, and it's an older, elderly neighborhood, and it just, it's going to create more problems than solution by allowing this building to be built there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here for 304? Yep, please come forward, just state your name and city of residence. Thank you.
My name is Asta DeBurla, and I own the property at 325 Lavelle Street. My concern is that there are some very large trees on that lot, and they're, have to eliminate them, and they're not, the only thing that's being stated is they're adding two small shrubs at the front of the building, so that's one of the main concerns. Just looking at the plans, it seems strange that each bedroom has only one window, and the second-floor bathrooms don't have any windows at all. I don't think I would like to live there. And I think that's about it for my current concerns. Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. Yep, please come forward, state your name and city of residence.
Hi, Susan Nash, 295 Lavelle Street, directly across from this said property. It's a one-way street, and it's a speedway, for one thing, and there's only parking allowed on one side of the street right now, and it has been, there's no parking sign up there right now anyway, for that side of the street that they're petitioning for. Parking is a nightmare, because it's a one-way, parking on one side, I'm directly across. To back out of my driveway at any given day, because of the traffic coming down from May Level, taking a left turn is a nightmare, too. Excuse me, I'm nervous, but anyway. And the sign up at the top of the street, thickly settled, we're already like, and there's, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of permits and variances that they need to fit this square peg into the round hole, so that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I live at 303, which is across from the three-decker. I agree with what Susan and Frankie were saying. It is a very dense street, it's very congested. There's like four triple-decker, which is kind of right directly across from us, and there are more than two cars per each apartment that is parked, that needs parking. And because it is a one-way street, there's only parking on one side, and again, there is trouble with like backing out the cars, watching what car's coming, or watching if there's kids running up and down the street. It's, it's already, and even there's people parking on the sidewalk, right under the sign that says no parking any time. I mean, even if you have somebody drive by it, you see it. It's just very congested, as it is already, and I've lived there for over 40 years, and the landscape has changed. It's not, it's not a, just a family, like a parents with young children, there is like parents with adult children, and each have their own cars. So each floor, I mean, there's one triple-decker that has like, I would say, eight to 10 cars any given day. So, and they are, they are spread out on the streets. So I mean, I, I just think, you know, building across the street, maybe something smaller, but definitely not a full unit, or, you know, it's just too congested. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here in person for 304 Lavelle Street? Is anybody online? Okay, we'll start with me, and then we'll, we'll sort of go along. I also had concerns, I think I would like to add a condition to, to the, to the order to sort of find, to like name the large, to make sure to get the large trees, and if possible, save them. So like, that's a part of the landscaping plan, so maybe it's, I don't know, B1, or maybe it's underneath B, but just to have some clarity on trying to keep as many of those really beautiful trees as possible if we were to move forward. Additionally, I think we have seen the new plan for, because I also would not want to lift the thing, I will say, we did get updated plans that were made available to us, you saw them walk before us, so they'll be made available through the Planning Department, you can see them and judge for yourself accordingly. So those are, those are sort of like the things I would like to see forward. I guess I'll address my general thoughts for it. I am walking distance to this, you know, it's not far from Beaver Brook, so I come by there, it's not a far walk for me on a regular basis, and this neighborhood is a lot like my neighborhood. And so I just think we should put three-deckers where there are three-deckers, and we should put multi-units where there are multi-units. It doesn't make sense to me to oppose it on a property that clearly can substantiate it, and I can't speak to why some people have more than two cars per unit, that's a lot. That's way more than anyone on my street, so I have questions, but I don't think we should stop development, because some people have an overabundance of cars. That's, currently, they're proposing two cars per unit, which is a lot more than we get these days, it's more than my, my property, a three-decker, has, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable moving this forward based on where it is and what they're proposing. I would like to see some, some more, you know, I think we need a plan. Oh, to address the water as well, it is a low point, they are going to, they'll have to infiltr, they'll have to put together a plan that shows that they infiltrate all the water, so currently, what's happening is it's just getting onto pavement and sheeting to wherever else it's going to go for low points. They're going to require to capture all of it and put it into the ground, so in terms of the water at least, that's the one thing that should get better on the site, although we do need a plan to back up sort of the things we're seeing on the, so we'll actually need a stormwater management. So those are my thoughts on this property. Board Member Brahmoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair. It feels like the, the theme is how many units today, is how many units can we jam into a property? And I guess, you know, you have to make money, so that's, that's part of it. It feels like a lot, and I guess the first question I have is why, why divide the lot? It's, is it currently under one, what's the purpose of dividing the lot? So you could sell each side separately?
I'm not planning on selling either side, no. They'll have the shared common driveway, all on both sides. I believe we had to do it, though. How much?
I, I don't understand it, it mystifies me. It seems like it's complicating the situation, unless you're going to sell each piece separately and then have a right-of-way, or passage, or shared parking, or something. It seems.
Through the chair, I can weigh in on this a little bit. So in the city of Worcester, the definition in the zoning ordinance requires that a single two- or three-family be located on its own lot, so a three-family could not be located on the same lot as a multifamily. Once you get to multifamily level and higher density, then you're allowed to have more than one building on a lot, which requires approval through the Planning Board. But with the existing condition being three units, it's just not permitted on another lot with another building. We did include a condition that they provide a recorded access agreement and maintenance for use of that shared driveway, so if the properties aren't held in common ownership in the future, the access will be retained for the residents, but they just simply aren't allowed to be located on one lot.
Thank you for that, but my understanding is if two contiguous lots are owned by the same person, the city has a rule or a policy of they're, they become one. Is that not so?
Through the chair, you're correct. It typically, it's called the merger doctrine will apply.
Thank you.
When you have a developed lot and an undeveloped lot, then they are typically merged for zoning purposes. If there's two developments, then they wouldn't no longer be merged. So if you have like two lots, and often we see people come in and get variances for the existing lot to allow the second lot to be developed, but in this case, it's, it's one lot, and once it's developed, it will no longer be considered merged.
Oh, so it becomes unmerged?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now I learn something new every day. It does feel like a lot of density, and I'm worried about lack of parking, driving, I drive that street a lot, I'm in that area, and it's really narrow. I had to stop to look at the lot, I went a little too far, I had to back up, you know, 20 or 30 feet. It was a little bit hairy.
Well, if you look at the design, and we are completely cognizant of all the neighbors' concerns, this parking proposal looks to mitigate some of those issues on the street, and if you look at the existing footprint of the parking lot, it's kind of just a free-for-all, but the proposal is going to have designated spaces. So all those spaces that are allocated to each unit are going to help to, and achieve a better result in terms of congestion, and people are going to know where they have to park instead of just parking anywhere, so I think that is kind of the, the proposal takes into account the fact that we're adding potentially eight or more people here to the street, and they're going to need somewhere to park, and the proposal contemplates that.
Still feels like a lot. And so do I also understand that currently you meet the parking requirement, but the city is asking you to eliminate two spaces, so you would need a variance for that? Is that correct?
I believe so.
They, they wouldn't need a further variance, because they're already required to get a variance, because technically, none of the parking is on their, on one lot. So it would be to just amend the variance they're asking for, if we were to go with the city's desire.
Good point. All right, well, I'll cede the microphone to my fellow board members for the time being.
Board Member Campanello?
Through the chair. I am a person who cuts from May Street on Lavelle Street frequently. Everything that the neighbors have. Everything that the neighbors have said is true regarding water runoff, regarding congestion on the street. That said, I do believe that this lot, something could go there. I personally think a three-decker would be more fitting, but again, one more. So when I'm thinking about the parking plan, and then the city's recommendation to remove a few spaces, my instinct is actually to keep them to relieve the, on-street parking and that issue, it is, that is a street that I go pretty slow down because of the, the cars either on one side or, or also on the other side if they shouldn't be. And then I'm going back and forth because to go against the city's recommendation of removing parking spaces, that tips to me that, you know, maybe, maybe this is too dense. So, I'm on, I'm on the fence with this one. I, I also agree with our chair regarding the trees. Those very large trees that are seemingly in the back of the lot, would those be able, able to be preserved or not?
They're rarely in the middle of the lot, they're not in the back of the lot.
In the middle of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But I think we're most certainly not opposed to providing more vegetation as a condition to approval.
Yep.
That would definitely be something I would want to add.
Board Member Cortez.
Through the chair. I personally, and in my view, I don't see much of a problem regarding the parking plans. I see a sort of a making arrangements between the different parking spots, making arrangements so you would be providing the two parking spaces for everyone. So it's sort of an arrangement done, I don't see problem with that. My question, since you, since this is gonna be a shared driveway, correct? Would that be wide enough, and it has a way in and out, divide, division?
Yes, I believe if you look at the plan, there's appropriate space for two cars.
And you would have a sort of a line, I mean, putting way in and out?
I believe it was, if that's depicted.
So there would be no confusion, anyone coming in, maybe coming on the left side, and someone is coming the same way, and, you know, so, you know, preventing accidents, I would say, you know, it just if it's wide enough, you have the in and out.
We can absolutely do that, yes.
All right. Regarding how the structure looks, is not really one of the, the lines for us to decide, however, this structure looks more like a barn structure thing, no, no windows or anything like that. So, I'm pretty much in, in line with statements made in here by the staff, which I read to you. An alternative layout such as reducing the footprint and building a third story, a third story, three stories, fifty feet in high, this would allow the additional open space on the lot, which could be activated for residence use. So that also is, is a good, a good thing to do, to look at it and consider that part. You, you, you have, you have that from the staff on your notes. Again, this barn looking, that doesn't...
On the plans we gave you, we did have the front porch with the overhang and the architectural shingles on the updated plan here to make it fit in more with the neighborhood.
I would look at that, that to improve the architecture plans that align more with the neighborhood character. That, I don't see no houses in that area that look like that. So, that's something that, to me, is almost a must to blend with the neighborhood. That said...
Thank you. Yeah. I'd say even with these updates, it still needs some work.
Okay.
Through the chair. I have another question. Seven units between the two buildings, how will trash be handled? Do you have a dumpster, or?
We were gonna do a city pickup.
Board Member Bernhagen.
Thank you, through the chair. Have you, did you consider, I agree with Board Member Cortez, instead of going out with two stories, have you started going up with three stories?
For a three-unit building, you mean?
Or whatever the unit, but, I mean, what went into the decision to make this two stories? Because the, the other building, the other triple-decker is a three-story building, so why make this different?
We did it because, really, to fit the fourth unit, and so it could be narrow, if we narrowed the building, it was gonna be difficult to fit that many units because of that.
So the, the three-story would, in your view, would only accommodate three extra units, not four?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that, that's interesting, because it dovetails with my impression that that might have been a more appropriate size of the development here, especially with the parking. I agree with the city staff about removing this, because two of those parking spaces are in the front yard, which, I don't know, that, that doesn't seem like it's something that should be encouraged. But then you get rid of those two spaces, and you're below the two spaces per unit, the requirement, but you wouldn't be if it was a three. In fact, you could even go lower on the parking and increase the, you know, remove some of the impervious development on that lot. It would also be more in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. You'd have one fewer units, so some of the neighbors' concerns about, you know, parking and the density of it, it is a, it is a narrow street, it's a one-way street. I usually cut down Mann Street, not this one, to get between May and Chandler, but, yeah, I'm on the fence about that as well. I think, I think this would have been a slam dunk if it were a three-unit. But, but the raising it to four, and what, what became necessary because it's a four-unit, in terms of the parking, in terms of the design of the building, is just giving me a little bit of pause. And just to, just in case this does go forward, you're asking for the waivers, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Board Member Torcono.
Yes, through the chair. I think this is also a stretch in terms of density, and then the style of the building. I would rather put a single family instead of even an investment property there. I'm not for four units or three units, a single property or two units, given the condition of the neighborhood. I'm not for it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Board Member Sacco.
No additional comment I can add. Thank you.
Okay. This would be a good time to get a sense of where everyone is.
Excuse me. One more thing, through the chair, I'd like to see, I mean, I know you've said, I think the trees are very important. That is a tree, very heavily-treed neighborhood, if I remember correctly, and you're taking down a substantial amount. I'd like to see a plan showing, you know, how many trees and where you would put them. Obviously, I want as many as possible, but...
Through the chair, I mean, one of the conditions is two shade trees in the front yard of both Lot One and Lot Two. I mean, there's no depiction of where they would be, but it just, the, the conditions which the applicant has already agreed to would add four trees, so...
So, four, four trees, two in front of each lot.
Edition 1B.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah. I might, I might increase it myself, like I was, I actually put on a note to myself that I would like to see the two trees, the two shade trees, and then there's, like, there's two in the back, like maybe two more to try to find the space, or at least a planning plan to say, yes, we tried, no, we can't, so I, I, I think between the two of you, I agree, I sort of put in my notes, like, I have a question about that. I'm curious where people are, if we're asking. It sounds like, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to do just a poll before we move forward, since Board Member Torcono is a no, I'm a yes, and so, Board Member Bramhoff, do you have a sense of where you'd like to go? And it could be to continue, it could be to, yes, it could be a no, like just to get a sense of where you're going.
Well, I have, I have three issues. One, I would be happier with a three-family, and reduce the parking, and increase the impervious surface, and I'd like to see additional trees, and all the landscape planting things, and also, what was the other thing? I guess I just forgot, but maybe it'll come back.
If it comes back to you, let me know, yeah. So it sounds like you're in, you would like a continuance, at least, for them to consider these issues.
Right. And the third thing I'd like to see is enhanced architectural plans.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Board Member Caponello, do you have a sense of your thoughts?
Through the chair, I'm in full agreement with Board Member Abramoff. My other question, I'm thinking trash, I'm also thinking snow removal, and if there's a snow removal plan?
There is in the plan there, showing snow storage.
I didn't see that, thank you.
Board Member Cortez.
Through the chair. I do see, obviously, that a continuance would be the way to give you the opportunity, the chance to include, you know, the comments, the suggestions, the recommendations that we made tonight, as Mr. Abramoff indicated, I'm in line with those, those parts. So, through the chair, I'm in favor of a continuance, so they have a chance to come back with a better plan.
Board Member Bernhagen.
Well, even though I don't get a vote, but at least tonight I don't. I think, I think, it sounds like the consensus, and I think I'm with it, is we need a continuance, so you can come back, address some of the design features, address the parking, get more detailed layout, maybe increase the landscaping design with, to add trees, and more critically for me, was if you reduce this from four to three, I think there, there would be a much better chance of this succeeding at a future meeting, if that were the case.
Okay, so, we're gonna put together a continuance. My suggestion would be, if we lived in a dictatorship, you would be fine with four, but it sounds like if you want to have four, you're gonna need to make a more compelling case, so I would say either figure out like a more compelling case, or figure out what you can work on this for you all. We, we're gonna continue this, is October 6th of that, do you, or do you want two meetings, or is that okay?
I think so.
Is that okay? You're always free to call the city beforehand, but you'd like to get this. Okay. So, we're gonna continue to the October 6th meeting, I, well, I guess that's my suggestion. Is there a motion?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue 304 Lavell Street to the October 6th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, Board Member Bramhoff.
My vote is yes.
Board Member Caponello.
Yes.
Board Member Cortez.
Yes.
Board Member Torcono.
Yes.
My vote's yes. For people who came forward, again, you're not gonna get another reminder, so please do get the contact information for the planning division, and they'll let you know about any updates, any of the plans, you can ask them for pictures of the plans, they submitted this, you'll please submit this electronically, you can see, and you can request any of the documents that they give to us, for you all to produce for yourselves as well, so please do ask the planning division for all of those things, and for the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is, I've lost my list. Oh, no, I'm buried under paper. Oh, yes, 222 Commonwealth, Commonwealth Avenue, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Donald O'Neill, I'm a lawyer here in Worcester, here tonight on this matter for Cole D. Roberto, and what we're requesting is for permission to divide this lot in two, and to construct a single-family dwelling on the additional lot created. The parcel has 135 feet of frontage, 13,500 square feet of area, so the division that we proposed is just to split the relief required between the two properties. We will be eliminating the existing parking situation and replacing that with a new parking area. And, actually, as, as shown on the plan, that complies with required parking and meets the applicable setback requirements and so forth, also comply with all of the impervious limitations in terms of front yard area. The other provision that was in the staff memo, I've looked at staff's memo, don't have any objections generally to the conditions, other than there was one which was requesting an additional window on each side elevation. I did supply, just this afternoon, a copy of the floor plan to staff. The reason for the window layout, as shown on the plan, is that this is a four-bedroom house, and those are all the bed walls on either side, so that we do have a fair number of windows on the backside, and also on the, on the lower level, we've got windows as well, and feel that the, basically, people need a spot to put, to put the bed, you know, against the wall. And on the, on the first floor, if you're looking at the top right-hand corner, that's the kitchen. That, if you look at the floor plan for the kitchen area, the window above the sink is actually on the backside, it's not on the, that side, which is the stove and the kitchen cabinets. So, it's, it's not a situation where we're trying to eliminate windows to cut corners, it's just trying to accommodate the layout that we've got. So I would request that, that that provision be stricken. If, I mean, if we have to, we could put a little window somewhere, but I think it, basically, a full-size window would interfere with all of the bedroom bed placements, and also in the first floor, if we were to go to that location, would basically complicate the kitchen layout in terms of kitchen cabinets and the stove and so forth. But the other provisions, I guess the, this is one actually where there are no waivers, so I don't need to request those, but aside from that, be happy to answer any questions you might have. The other provision I would say is that this is an RL7 zone, so obviously, you could put an addition on this and make it a two-family, which would require 70 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet, or to follow up on our previous discussion, by special permit, you could either do three townhouses, or potentially four townhouses in terms of the area that's available, because it does have 13,500 square feet and 135 feet of frontage. But I think this is a, and what's proposed is entirely consistent with the neighboring properties, and my client, after considering the options, decided that this was the one that he liked best.
Okay. City staff.
Through the chair, Amy Beth Leith for the planning division. Presently on the premises of this property is a single-family dwelling, it's in the RL7 zoning district, and the applicant seeks to divide the property into two lots, with the existing single-family detached dwelling to remain on Lot One, and a single-family detached dwelling to be built on the newly-created lot. The existing single-family dwelling is pre-existing and privileged, non-conforming in regard to the required front yard setback. The property, as it was, was constructed around 1890. The applicant does plan to relocate this shed that is currently on this property, and they are gonna move it to the lot for the, the existing house. The zoning relief that the applicant is seeking for Lot One is 250 square feet from the 7,000 square foot minimum lot area requirement, and on Lot Two, he, they are requesting the same 250 square feet from the 7,000 square foot minimum lot area requirement. The parcel does slope gradually from the street down to the rear, and the applicant plans to install erosion controls to the rear of the existing house and around the rear of the new construction, as well as a dry well to the rear of the newly-constructed single-family dwelling. single-family dwelling. Staff is recommending the installation of one new tree in the backyard of each lot. And the applicant states that the work in the rear of the property will not require removal of any native vegetation that currently exists. As described by Attorney O'Neill about the driveways, the applicant is intending to close the existing curb cut and relocate the driveway of the existing house to the north. The existing driveway does have a small retaining wall slash wooden structure holding up the driveway that's not identified on this plan. So can the applicant talk about the proposed, if there's any proposed regrading to the driveway and whether any retaining walls are proposed to stabilize? And we'll need to see that on a future iteration of the plan that's submitted. And as also described, this neighborhood is primarily single-family detached dwellings, so the proposed is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is anyone here for 2222 Commonwealth Avenue? Is anybody online? Raise your hand for the raise your hand function. Okay. This is straightforward for me. There, this lot is the same size as all the others and it's a single-family like everyone else on the, on the, in the neighborhood, so I'm ready to move it forward. Other, Board Member Brahman?
Well, thank you, through the chair. Well, considering the way things were going, I was expecting a 10-story hotel. But it's a single-family house, looking for de minimis relief, 3.57% by my calculation. I have no problem supporting this.
Board Member Campanello?
Through the chair, this one's easy. I have no problem.
Board Member Cortez?
Through the chair, I just want to, for you to address how exactly you plan, if there is already a decision, what would be the plan regarding the retaining wall? What is, what's gonna happen?
It's, it's my decision. It's a, kinda like a railroad tie-type structure, only like a couple of feet high. And the plan would be to replicate that or possibly, depending upon the condition of the wood, maybe it'll be replaced with pressure-treated timber. But it's a small retaining structure which we would continue on and it's not the type of thing that you would need an engineer to design or anything of that nature. So we would, we would essentially continue with it and it would be shifted to account for the fact that the driveway is being shifted itself a little bit as well.
Through the chair, so what I'm hearing is that yes, that, the issue or the question retained, the retaining wall, you're not sure, yes, what, how is it gonna be done? But the answer is, it's gonna be addressed.
Yes. Yeah. And we can probably, I think we could probably show it on the plan just with a note, but it's not, not much of a wall, truthfully. Thank you.
Board Member Barnhagen?
Through the chair, so recommendation 1C is the one you'd like struck in?
Yes.
Yeah, and does the city have any comments on them?
No, I didn't. Attorney O'Neill did submit floor plans earlier this afternoon. I did not have a chance to put them in the slide deck and did reconcile what he stated and it is true that all the walls are where the beds have to go.
All right, then, yeah, I don't think I have anything further. I just wanna congratulate you on that rare unicorn of a waiverless application.
Board Member, Board Member Torcono?
No comment, thank you.
Board Member Sacco?
No comment.
All right, in that case, I will entertain a motion.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Sarah Sacco?
Sure move.
On the motion, Board Member Brahman?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Campanello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for 22 Commonwealth Avenue for a variance for relief on Lot 1 of 250 square feet from the 7,000 square foot minimum lot area requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL-7 zone. And for a variance for relief on Lot 2 of 250 square feet from the 7,000 square foot minimum lot area requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL-7 zone, including the recommendations, but removing 1C on page 3 of 6 of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Sure move.
On the motion, Board Member Brahman?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Campanello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next up is 36A Barrows Road, which I will tell you, I missed when I drove by it.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Especially because there's two 36s.
There's 36! I saw 36, not 36A. Go ahead.
How are we doing tonight? So we are looking to construct a 30-by-30 detached garage. The relief we're looking for is for the height requirement. The garage would be 27 feet tall and we would need 12 feet of relief. The other variance we're looking for is it's gonna be in the front setback. This property is unique. It has property in both Worcester and Holden. The current single-family home is located completely in Holden and there is not enough room to put the garage in Holden, which is why we're trying them to do this. We are also trying to eliminate increasing the size of the garage, where we could double the size of the garage and have it a single story, but it just wouldn't match with what's there in the neighborhood and the character. I'm good.
Great. City of Worcester?
Through the chair, this is Amy Beth Leith for the Planning Division. So presently on the premises is a single-family detached dwelling that straddles the Worcester-Holden boundary line. The single-family dwelling is located wholly within the town of Holden, but the property is accessed via approximately 270-foot driveway that stretches from Barrows Road north to the house. It is in the RS-7 zoning district. The applicant seeks to construct a 27-foot-tall, approximately 1,500-square-foot, two-story detached garage in the front yard of the property. Since the dwelling is located at the very rear of the property, the majority of the property is considered the front yard. The applicant is seeking to add a gravel extension of the driveway to provide access to the garage. There will be no increase to the impervious surface. The applicant plans to use the second story of the garage for cold storage and will be unheated and uninsulated space, but the garage will have electricity. The applicant did provide more information on the use of the garage in the fact that the reason why the ceilings are gonna be so high is because the applicant is looking to install a lift in the garage for parking purposes of multiple cars and also to maximize the amount of storage that's on the second floor of the garage. So to the applicant's point, our, our by right alternatives were to construct the garage in the town of Holden, in which case then they wouldn't need the relief from the city of Worcester. And then alternately, the applicant could reduce the height of the structure to comply with the 15-foot maximum height requirement. That was previous to the city understanding the applicant's purpose for the garage. And I think that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone here for 36A Barrows Road? Is anybody online? Use the raise your hand function or feature or press star nine. Okay. This is pretty straightforward. I think somebody should be able to put a garage in their house, so I'm a yes. Board Member Brahman?
Thank you, through the chair. Well, it sounds like a garage I'd like to own, so. I don't have any problem with this. Just curious, is parcel A part of this lot?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. So parcel A is actually the Worcester part?
Right.
The dash line going across is the Holden-Worcester line.
Right.
So the garage actually meets the setbacks completely in Worcester off of that Holden line and everything else.
Sure. I don't have any problem with this. I'd like to recommend a sign at the street, 36A. Narrow because...
I mean, the mailbox is there and has numbers.
It was a little confusing and if I'm the fire department, God forbid, or an ambulance, double, God forbid, you know, make it a little easier. That's my recommendation. Otherwise, I'm in favor of it.
I was so confused. Board Member Campanello?
Through the chair, I have no problem with this, but since we mentioned mailbox, my question is, the address of the house is at 36A Barrows Road, Holden?
So, yes. Mail-in.
Okay. This is just a personal point of curiosity.
Yeah, so the mail-in address is actually considered Worcester.
Okay.
Because it's access from...
From Barrows Road to Worcester. Okay, thank you.
Board Member Cortez?
Through the chair, another curious question over here. Looking at the picture there, and my question, my curiosity is, and here, why in front of the house? And I, and I guess, you know, would go back to the, please, right. So is it gonna be in front of the, those windows? If you're looking at this picture right here?
No, that's not it.
Oh, that's not, that's not...
Through the chair.
You can't see the house in that picture.
Board Member Cortez, what you're looking at now, this driveway, is the access? And this is a, what did I say? It's a 270-foot driveway that goes back to the house.
Okay. In any case, it's still in front of the house, which you may, I don't know, it may be obstructing some windows already, views or anything like that, I don't know. But, you know, why not in the back of the house?
It doesn't, it won't meet setbacks and the location.
Not enough space.
No.
Okay, thank you.
So it's like, it's, it's actually not even on this thing. It's like over here and that's the front of the house. It's the, it's frontage technically, but it's not actually the front. Yeah, it's a weird, we've all, we were, it's confusing. Board Member Barnhagen?
Through the chair, just a technicality, you're okay with all the recommendations? Have you looked at the recommendations in the staff memo? And there's, there's several of them, they're not, I'm sure they're acceptable, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there was...
Like there's a, it requires a revised site plan and architectural plan to depict the limit of the clearing, a two-scale and dimensionally correct architectural plan of the garage construction, and then some boilerplate provisions that are in most everyone's application.
Yeah, so we're only clearing 10 feet around the structure. We're not clearing anything else and...
Do you need a copy? We have them here.
Do you? All right. The drawings aren't a problem. I actually gave Amy the two-scale architectural plan showing the height of the elevations for the construction.
Through the chair, we are looking for a stamped architectural set of plans, not a hand-drawn set, to be clear.
And, yeah, there won't be any damage to public ways or infrastructure or anything like that. And soil erosion, sediment, there won't be any problem. The lot's pretty flat where it is located.
Through the chair, if I could just add, the condition regarding architectural plans, we're just looking for a two-scale and dimensionally correct architectural plan. It doesn't have to be stamped by a registered architect. There's just some confusion with the hand-drawn plans that were provided with the dimensions not matching, so it doesn't have to be stamped. We just wanna make sure it's dimensionally correct.
Two-scale and correct, yeah.
Exactly. And one more thing, do you mind just identifying yourself for the record? I might have missed it.
I'm Scott Barrows from Barrows, even now, ex-mayor.
I apologize, I should have definitely done that. Thank you, Rose.
Right. And so, you know...
I'm gonna be the GC for the job.
And so, yeah, just, so that's, these are the kind of things that when we approve this, there's, these recommendations will be incorporated into approval and so you'll just have to comply with them. But it sounds like there's no problem with that. And I'll just take over your job, Chair.
Yes, please do.
Mr. Chair, there are three waivers here. You want to, you want to ask for them, correct?
Yes, I want to ask for all the waivers.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for doing that. Board Members, Board Member Torcono?
No comment.
Board Member Sacco?
No comment.
In that case, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to close, Board Member Brahman?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Campanello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 36A Barrows Road?
I'd like to make a motion for 36A Barrows Road for a variance for relief of 12 feet from the 15-foot maximum height requirement for an accessory structure in a residential zone and for a variance for relief of an accessory structure occupying the front yard in a residential zone, including the recommendations and waivers on page 3 of 5 of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
I do second the motion.
On the motion, Board Member Brahman?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Campanello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
All right. All in favor? All right.
Yes.
So we will be back at 7:30 exactly. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Everybody ready? Is applicant ready? Worcester Zoning Appeals is back in session. Next up is number 510 Trehan Avenue. If the applicant could please come forward. If you could just turn on, make sure the green light's on. There you go.
There we go. Okay. My name is Paul Paldino, and I'm at 10 Trehan Ave. And right now, I'm seeking two variances. One is for a setback, and the other is for a structure in front of the house. As you can see by the plot plan, there is actually no other location to put this. I'm bound by a pie-shaped lot. But having said that, I've been here for 46 years, and it's pretty tough to give up on a good neighborhood. The structure itself is a versatile structure, which is a well-made, 20-year warranty structure. It's freestanding, there's no foundation. It's just basically a canopy that covers my driveway. Not much else to say. As far as the setback, I'm looking for the setback because I do have physical problems. I do have medical issues. And even if that, so does my wife. So it's kind of a, a need more than a want.
Through the chair, I need to recuse myself.
Oh, okay.
One question that did come up is on the picture where you see the car in the top right-hand corner. You do see the side portions that come down. Those are the last extensions of the roof. At that point there, I did get a cease and desist notice. And instead of securing them in, I just popped them back off again. Because I didn't want to go any further, till I had an okay.
Okay. Staff.
Through the chair, this is Rose in the Planning Division. So this is very similar to the application we just looked at. The applicant is seeking, in this case, the carport has already been constructed. It's already on the lot. And as you can see, it's setback .2 feet from the right-of-way Trehan Avenue, and then it's setback .8 feet from the southern lot line. So they're seeking relief of 5 feet from the 5-foot requirement for an accessory structure. Anything over 6 feet in height the zoning ordinance dictates as a structure, which requires a 5-foot setback. In addition to that, they're also seeking a variance to allow an accessory structure to occupy the front yard. So. Just to add a little bit more, it's a 390-square-foot carport. We're in the RL7 zoning district. There's no buy-right options for this. This is over their existing driveway, as you can see the location of the house. There's really not another viable location to place a carport on the property. It was originally a little bit closer to the street or in the right-of-way, and it's been moved onto their property. I did have some, one question. In some of these photos, you can see their sides on the carport, they come down. And then in other photos, they're not on the carport. So I was just curious if this was something you're gonna have up seasonally during the winter months, if they're not gonna be there at all permanently, or they'll be on permanently. So that was the only question I had for the applicant to address. But otherwise, it's pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
You can answer that question.
I answered that question already. I did take them back off, because I had a cease and desist on it.
Yeah.
But yes, they're part of the roof, they're the extension of the roof. So they will go back on.
Okay. Is anybody here from, for 10 Trehan Avenue? Yes, please come forward. Just state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Michael Coniff, from 8 Trehan Avenue.
And I'm Debbie Coniff, from Worcester. So we object to having this carport remain in place at 10 Trehan Avenue. It obstructs our view when backing out of our driveway. We are unable to see the oncoming traffic, pedestrians walking, which there are a ton of them in the neighborhood, and kids on bikes. To add to the hazard, there is a curve in the road. So when we're backing out, you have the curve, and then you have a carport with the sides that come down approximately 2 feet off of the ground. And you can please refer to the picture that I submitted to the committee prior to this meeting. It's also an unnecessary liability to us that if we get hit by a car while exiting our property, or a pedestrian gets hit, we are held liable for a carport that is not necessary. There is a driveway, and a carport is not a necessity in life. Also, they're not using the driveway. The vehicles are parked in the street. So the driveway is empty along with the carport.
Except for that.
Except for one vehicle there. So, and also lastly, it just also changes the overall look of the street and the neighborhood to have a carport in your front yard. But my, the biggest issue for us is the safety concern and the hazard that it brings to us unnecessarily. So we ask that the carport not remain in place.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here for 10 Trehan Avenue? Yep, please come forward, just state your name and city of residence.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, my name is Gisele Granieri. I live on, on the other side of 8. And there is one picture that shows, as the Coniffs were saying, where there's a bend in the street. And if safety is the issue, what I had suggested was to put up, there's a telephone pole right at the bend, and to put up one of those mirrors, so as you're either pulling out or backing out, you could see traffic coming from both sides. And that would eliminate any kind of safety issues. And it is unfortunate that the whole street on both sides doesn't have any type of sidewalk. So all of us are walking our dogs or children. It's a very, very busy road. They just put up a few speed bumps to try and control the area. But I, that's my only suggestion. I don't live close enough for this to actually inhibit any of my view. I can see fine coming up and down the street, because I go slow enough. I'm aware that there's a curve. The curve is pretty bad. There was someone on the road who hit the mailbox there. So I think either way, it would be nice to have a mirror there for safety. Hopefully, this gets resolved. And that's the only thing I have to say.
Thank you for your time. Is anybody else here from, yes, please come forward, state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Lisa Paldino. I live at 10 Trehan Ave, where the carport is. The reason why we want the carport is because we're getting older. We have a lot of health issues, especially my husband. He has a handicap placard. He has reactive airway disease. He has a lot of things onboard. And winters in New England are brutal. And we just were looking for something that would make our job easier in the winter when we go outside to clear snow or not have it on the vehicles. We're just looking to try and make our lives better as we get older. Not looking for any problems, not looking for anything to be in anybody's way. We're just trying to live more comfortably at our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here from 10, 4, excuse me, 10 Trehan? Yes, go ahead, just state your name and city of residence.
Michael Paldino, I live in Worcester, Massachusetts. These are my parents. I live down the street from them. And to say that the carport is necessary, I think is the truth. Because I live, like I said, I live right up the street. And when we have inclement weather, I come down and I take care of my parents. I shovel, I snow blow, and this would greatly help them, especially when we have the inclement weather months in Massachusetts. Also, to say that no one parks in the driveway is not true, because my mother does. I do too. And so into, in pulling into the driveway and pulling out, I can see just fine. So I would think that other people would be able to see too. So I just hope that you would consider kind of, you know, their age and their need for this, and the fact that they've tried to kind of make the appropriate corrections that they've needed to for this. And that's all I got. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Yep, just state your name and city of residence and address me directly, please.
I'm Michael Coniff, from 8 Trehan Ave. I'd like to, I'll rebut on that, on the cars in the driveway. The pickup truck is across from our driveway. It's not, it's been there for two months. And they have a GMC parked in front of their house, not in the driveway. So at the moment, their two cars are on the street. And these people just said they parked their cars in the driveway. They don't.
Thank you. Is there anybody online?
Yes, we do have someone with their hand raised. Yamira, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for taking your time to hear me, my say, my take on this. I've been living on 15 Trehan Ave since 2014. The Paldino family having nothing but great. Our neighborhood, like a prior person said, is filled with children. I have two small children myself. I don't have any problem with the, with the carport. I think it looks really nice. The last couple that mentioned that it blocks their driveway, the carport is on the left side of the, of the, you guys, yes, that picture. So the carport is on the opposite side of their driveway. So it does not obstruct, you can't even see the carport from the trees. So I don't understand why that was mentioned. Just to kind of give you guys like a visual. I do want to say that that carport will be a big help for them, especially in the winter. I mean, they talked about like how they clean their cars, but we're kind of, we're a very tight neighborhood. We help each other out. Sometimes if, if we have a neighbor across the street, like, we help each other out. We don't clean just one car. That will be a huge help for them. I think it looks beautiful. They're great in the neighborhood. I mean, like mentioned earlier with the children, the Paldinos, they always make everybody welcome, always decorating for the holidays, always have a big spirit. I am very lucky to live in Trehan Avenue, and I hope you guys take consideration to approve this carport, because it would greatly help them out. Thank you.
Through the chair, Yamira, can you just state your full name and town of residence for the record?
I know, I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous. This is my first time speaking. So my first name is Yamira, Y-A-M-I-R-A. My last name is Gonzalez, G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z. And I live on 15 Trehan Ave. So I'm in the opposite side. When I walk my dogs, walk with the children, their house is beautiful. I don't see any obstruction. I don't see, I mean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online for?
Yes, we have one more person.
We'll let the person online go, and then, and then you can go, if that's okay? We'll let the person online go, and then you can come speak, if that's okay? Yep. Person online, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Robyn Yancy. I'm at 5 Trehan Ave.
Yep, go ahead.
I just want to say, you are universally going to hear that we have a great neighborhood here on Trehan Ave, and we're trying to keep it that way. As far as the specific carport that they're reporting, I don't have an issue with this. I don't think it causes an obstruction. But I do want to note that that curve that they discussed is problematic for the street. But I do believe that those are two very separate issues in the parking lot that curve. So it's hard to separate the two. And the neighbors do not want to cause any more turmoil with this particular subject. But as far as the specific variance for the carport, I think it's helpful. I don't see an issue with it. But again, I'm across the street, just like Yamira is, a house or two away. I'm not directly next door. But I think the true issue is the curve that we have there, and they just happen to be located there.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward, just state your name and city of residence. Excuse me.
Yes, my name is Carol Gurgis. Excuse me. And I live at 22 Trehan Ave, which is just around the curve from where Paul and Lisa live. And if anything, my driveway is probably the most difficult to get out, just because of the way the curve is. Not only are there cars in the street or the carport, but the people next door to me have trucks and cars and everything there in the street. You just have to, you know, you can't fly out of a driveway. You have to take your time. And honestly, I mean, I've lived there since 1970. And by my own frivolous stuff, I have backed into a car that was parked across the street from me, but I've never been hit by one coming down. And I really don't see it as a problem. It is a neighborhood, it is, it is the, what makes the neighborhood the way it is. And everybody is very friendly, and we try, we do try to help. And Lisa and Paul have always been good. In any event, I think it, I think it actually enhances. It looks pretty darn good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, through, you can address it through me. Thank you. Just state your name again for the record. You'll have to do it in the, on the, it's okay. It's confusing for all of us.
So Debbie, in Worcester. So I just meant to mention one more thing. There is a reason why there's city ordinances that are written to protect everybody. And there is already a city ordinance in place that you can't have a carport in your front yard. So quite frankly, I'm a little surprised that we even got to this point of discussing it here. The ordinance has already been written that you can't have it in your front yard. So I'm really not sure why we have so much discussion over it. But I, again, hope that you can see for our side the safety purpose of this. And enforce the, an ordinance that has already. already been written by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online or in person? Okay. For the purposes of voting for this, I'm going to ask Board Member Barton Hagan to come in. For those of you who couldn't see, Board Member Campanella had to recuse themselves for this, for this, for 10 Trahan Avenue. So with that being said, we move forward. So my feelings about this are several. I definitely understand the concern about the sort of bend 10 Trahan. I drove by it, and I think we can talk about what are some recourses to encourage people, encourage maybe the city to do more, including, I know that there's sort of barriers on the street to slow down. I think that's important. That being said, I'm comfortable moving this forward. A carport is over top of already impervious is a limited request. Just for clarity, the ordinance for the zoning board, the Zoning Board of Appeals exists because there's a recognition that simply having sort of the -- there's rules, but ultimately, it takes people to make sure that they enforce them, and so every person coming before us is asking for us leniency in the rules based on limitations that are set out before us. So we sit here unpaid but volunteers, because the ordinance lays out a process by which we evaluate whether or not certain things that people want to do fits in with our ability to give some leniency. That being said, there is reviews, like all forms of government, so if any party feels aggrieved, there is an appeal process that they can go forward. I don't know what other board members are deciding, so it could be either side, but we are not the final say if you have other objections to that. But from my perspective, as a board member, this is a limited request for some, for a semi-permanent structure over an already -- the limitations is for parking in the front. Well, parking is already in the front. So that the car, it's not specifically you can have carports, it's not, it's that we would, we would, in most cases, we would like people to not park in their front. But in this case, that's already the case, and there's not really any place to go based on this design. So based on all of those factors, which is that there is no other recourse for this, and that it's all, it's overstanding and already, like if they were trying to build a carport and put something in, that would be different, but this is where the driveway already is. So based on those, I'm a yes in this moment. Board Member Abramov.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair. Well, it's clear that there is a hardship here. The layout of the lot done, I don't know, 50, 75 years ago, didn't allow for off-street parking. And so off-street parking is in the front yard setback regardless, and the addition of the carport, which frankly, I think belongs more in Florida than in Worcester, and it's not my favorite item, but I could support this if the special permit is to the current tenant only, doesn't go to the property in perpetuity, because I think the current tenant has made an argument for how much they need it. And I believe that's something that is not, we're not setting a precedent. I believe that's been done before. I'm not positive, but I have to ask staff.
Through the chair, I'd like to verify, but I believe special permits can be conditioned to run with a certain operator. In this case, it's a variance, which has to run with the land. I'm going to double check, but I think that's the case.
I think that's correct as well.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'd be happier if it's the other way.
My understanding is, though, the variance is, no, one of the variances is for the existing driveway, but the second variance for an accessory structure is specific. You're correct.
Yeah, so we can't limit the time.
I mean, the city can look it up while other people talk, but I believe that's correct.
Dave, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
To the chair. I just want to make a point that, so this was, this came to my attention as a violation of the zoning ordinance, so we should have an order to remove doing our job, regardless of the hardship of the families or what have you. My concern moving forward is if this does get approved, there's going to need a building permit for this, and it has to be approved. It has to meet certain snow load requirements. There's requirements for anchoring it. There's no foundation with this. My concern is having it blow down the street and end up in the neighbor's yard. So I'm not sure if this is going to be able to be proved to be adequate for the Massachusetts, state of Massachusetts, for us to sign off on it, but I guess, you know, we'll find out shortly if this is approved. Thank you.
So to clarify, if it's approved, they still have to go through the process of getting a building permit and have to meet the requirements for the building permit, presumably like the other carports sort of in the neighborhood.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
I'll wait to hear from other board members. Thank you.
Board Member Cortez.
Through the chair. There are a couple of things that, a carport is, is that a solid structure with walls obstructing view? Actually, you can look through it, because they're just some kind of legs holding the roof. I don't see, you know, one obstruction would be, because you can look through.
Right.
You can just basically look through it. One suggestion would be even to make it even more open for viewing would be to use the non-walls roof, the one on the other picture. The one, as you see on the picture on the left, that has, that doesn't have those bent walls in there, that even gives a more clear view, and that would be then sort of, you know, fixed. I, regarding parking on the street, it is allowed unless the city has a no parking, has no parking restrictions there, just like any part of the city. If you don't see that no parking, then you can park, but if you don't have that, people is allowed to park. I don't, you know, it's looking, and that's, that's to myself, yes, listening to the avatars, you know, the concerns there, but on the other hand, there is a midway so we can help each other, as they said there, the neighborhood. How can, how can we help this individual who needs it based on health conditions and is a friendly individual, not a problematic individual? How can we help each other, you know? And that would be some, you know, part of working out some of the points I'm making to make it, you know, to have the view and the obstruction. Now, I'm not sure why not parking in the driveway. You have the right to park on the street, but if you can park on the driveway, it's something you can mitigate by possibly start parking on your driveway. So those kinds of things that can be worked out between the parties, but I don't see, I don't see a problem really on allowing the car. However...
Parking in the driveway is not an issue.
However, however, I recognize the explanation just given by Mr. Horn, that if we approve, there needs to be a clear understanding, that if we approve, then you have to go forward for another permits, you know? If you understand that, then, and it's part of what we are proving in here, I have no problem.
Right. Two things that I can address right now is, as far as the roof line coming down, that's adjustable. That can go up.
Okay.
Okay? And as far as it blowing away, it's pinned in with 30-inch pins into the ground, so it's not likely to lift and go. I mean, the company supplies 20-inch pins. I made 30-inch pins.
I guess I'll say, I feel comfortable with the inspectional services, that I think they'll need some sort of like technical and some other things, and if this were to move forward, you would have to negotiate, you'd have to work with them.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Board Member Barton Hagan.
Thank you. Through the chair. Just a couple of points. I mean, I hear the neighbors mostly have no problem with this. I understand the concern of visibility from the neighbor to the immediate left, but I'm not sure, I don't see how, this view in particular, there's some trees and shrubs there, you know, I'm not sure that the carport really adds significantly to whatever existing visibility problem that might have already been there, and I appreciate the neighbor's suggestion of some other kind of solution to that problem, but I'm not sure the carport is something that I, you know, either adds or detracts to that existing problem. I think it's kind of a separate issue. With the concern Mr. Horn expressed about, you know, the building permit, it's possible, I'm not sure we should rely on the fact that those, it might be that the, to meet the building permit requirements, you might need stronger, you might need to have the sides down, or not have sides, or whatever size pins, but I guess that's not in before us right now, but I'm not sure we should, we should count on any one configuration or another when we're approving this. I think we should just understand that whatever the building permit requires is going to happen, and whatever the design that might require is going to be required. Again, it's over, it's already over an impervious driveway, so I don't have any problem with that. I just, I want to ask you if you want to request the waivers here in the staff memo, which you do want to request them.
Yes.
Okay. And so ultimately, whatever solutions to the visibility problem there might be, I think that's to be addressed in a different form than what we're here for today, which is just whether we want to approve a carport over an existing driveway, and I don't really have a problem with that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair. My understanding is that I did hear you when I indicated that if you're willing, if we approve it tonight, with the condition basically that you would have to go, as Mr. Horn indicated, for additional permits, instructional placing and so forth, I would have no problem. And my understanding by you seeing you moving your head is that you are okay with that.
Yes.
If that's done, I have no problem to approve it in my position.
Board Member Torcono.
Given the conditions of the applicant, their age, it's already there. I support it.
Okay. Board Member Sacco.
Yep. Initially, I'm in full support of your project.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
I'd like to make some motion to close on 10 Trahan Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, Board Member Abramov.
My vote is yes.
Board Member Cortez.
Yes.
Board Member Torcono.
Yes.
Board Member Barton Hagan.
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion on 10 Trahan Avenue?
I'd like to make a motion for 10 Trahan Avenue for a variance for relief of five feet from the five-foot minimum setback requirement for an accessory structure in a residential zone, and a variance for relief of an accessory structure occupying the front yard in a residential zone, with the recommendations and waivers on page three of five of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Some more.
On the motion, Board Member Abramov.
My vote is yes.
Board Member Cortez.
Yes.
Board Member Torcono.
Yes.
Board Member Barton Hagan.
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you very much. Next up is 74 Summer Hill Avenue. If the applicant could please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm Marcus Silva, live at 74 Summer Hill, and I'm seeking for relief of 1524, 1,526 square feet on the minimum lot of 7,000 square feet, and, you know, I have the required frontage for the lot, and I'm just short on a minimum-sized lot, and I'm seeking to build a single family next to the prop that I leave on it.
Okay. City of Worcester.
Through the chair, this is Amy Beth Lee for the Planning Division. At 74 Summer Hill Avenue, presently on the premises is a single-family detached dwelling. This is the RL7 zoning district. The applicant seeks to divide the property and construct a single-family detached dwelling on the newly created lot. The property has approximately 14,090 square feet of lot area and approximately 135.3 feet of frontage along Summer Hill Avenue, and the existing property complies with dimensional requirements. The applicant intends to retain the row of shrubs on the western side of Lot 1, providing a buffer between the existing and the proposed single-family dwelling. No improvements to the existing single-family dwelling are proposed, and as the applicant indicated on the proposed lot, Lot 1, they're asking for relief of 1,526 square feet from the 7,000-square-foot minimum lot area requirement for a single-family detached dwelling. For staff comments, the applicant submitted architectural drawings, and in these architectural drawings, they seem to depict a change in topography on the western elevation, providing a direct entry to the basement. We are asking for the applicant to provide civil plans that would include any extent of retaining walls if they're proposed, any walkways in coordination with this entrance, and we're concerned that the regrading of the property could create or alter slopes greater than 15%. So we're asking the applicant to demonstrate that 15% or more of the slope is not being disturbed by this proposal right here, and if it's identified that 15% or more of the slope is being disturbed, then this project would require site plan approval from the planning board as well. And then the only question that staff has for the applicant is for the applicant to discuss how they plan to manage stormwater on site with this additional development, and we've recommended that potentially rain barrels could help with the roof runoff, and of course, we're going to ask for extra trees. Amy, can you answer any questions?
Okay. Is anybody here for 74 Summer Hill Avenue? Okay. Is anybody online for Summer Hill Avenue? Okay. Do you have a sense of the, I was, I had the same question as the city when I was out there regarding the slopes. Do you have a sense of your ability to sort of, it didn't feel like, basically, it didn't feel like there was enough of a slope to have a walk-in on the basement, and so we're trying to get a sense of that.
Yeah, so the plan there is to kind of grade, you know, to the level of the walkway. So the west side, actually, the east side is the higher side, and the west side is the lower side. So as we grade to the level of the walkway, you know, it's when we're going to be able to achieve the walkout from the basement without disturbing 15% of the gray in there. You know, if that is the case, all the stormwater structure will be put in place, you know, so we not disturb any of the neighbors or the neighbor who lives next door, who have his garage right next to the property line right there.
So I think, I think for me, there's two separate things. First is, I think we would want, even regardless, like without anything, I would want to have some sort of process. of process for take, collecting runoff from the, from the roof, and either pushing it towards the street, or putting it into a storm thing. Because regardless, you want to like, collect it. So it's not just running off the roof into your neighborhood, neighbor. So that, to me, that's one. It's like, I think I would want that on the plan. Regardless, and I think we have a, I think, I believe we have a recommendation to that effect. Let me just, well, I guess I'll keep talking and I'll check as I do this, I recall correctly. And then the other, yeah, the other part is just, I think the city is looking for, like, Amy Beth, am I understanding this correctly? You're looking for a plan that says, yes, for sure, we know that there will be enough of a slope to get a walk-in. And if not, what's the plan so that you're not grading it to, to create enough space?
To your point, there was no proposed grading plan submitted with this application. So yes, we would like to see what the grading plan is to understand that it's not more than 15% correct.
Yeah. So I think, as long as there's a plan that says that, I'm comfortable. I think otherwise this is straightforward. So that, that would be my, those are my things. Board Member Brahmov?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to see, as you pointed out, a grading plan and a stormwater management plan. But in general, I can support this. I can see that there is enough land between the two lots to meet the, the code. And they could, I mean, I don't know if it's, what's allowed, if they created in the backyard a more irregular-shaped lot, then they would have the ability to add enough land from that lot to, from, from the existing house to the proposed house, to not need a variance. So it seems to make sense to have a straight line there. And I wouldn't argue with that at all. If you added a grading plan and a stormwater management plan, I could easily support this.
Board Member Cepanello?
I have no problem or no additional comments.
So just really quickly, for the Board Member Cortez, I don't see in the recommendation sort of what you, what the city discussed. So I think I would, I would like, I would like, I guess, six before seven. No. Oh, no, there is drainage. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Never mind. It's number seven. So I guess the question is, have you read the recommendations?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And then the waivers, are you?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's just number seven, I think clarifies it. I apologize, George. Board Member Cortez?
Through the Chair, yes. I'm also making, making clear that, you know, the, the drainage situation or plan has, has to be done. And what I see from your way is that, yes, you are going to, you're going to do that. So I have no problem to move forward. One quick question is, if you don't mind putting the pictures back on the screen, the other one with the houses, that one there. Help me out. On, it looks like a garage, and I'm not sure if it's a house, right next to, next to the property there, on the other piece? Yeah, it's a-
The yellow one?
It looks like a small house.
It's a garage.
Is, is that a garage?
Yes.
And that belongs to you?
It's attached garage to the neighbor next door.
That, that belongs to the neighbor?
It belongs to the neighbor.
Okay. So, so therefore, okay. I'm, I'm looking into not, then you build this house here. You're going to see people walking around and doing whatever kids playing and so forth. So it may be made of course some encroachment into the neighbors there. So I'm kind of looking for a, a nice fence.
Okay. And I have a good setback on that side as well. I would be probably 10 feet away from, from that garage. Probably 12 feet away from the garage.
Yeah, between the two properties. But, you know, that would limit or diminish any encroachment, any, any disturbances between the, with the neighbors.
No, okay. Sure. I guess, I, I don't, I don't think I need a, I don't think I need a, to require a fence. I wonder if other people feel the need. I just want to open it up to the board.
Through the Chair. I'm, I'm not sort of requiring, maybe a proposal to require, just a suggestion. And he seems to be, he seems to be okay with that.
That sounds great. Yeah, yeah. Kind suggestion, please take it accordingly.
Sure.
I agree. I think it's a great suggestion. I guess I don't want to mandate it, but I think it's a great suggestion. Okay. Yeah.
Through the Chair, just to correct an earlier comment-
Yes, I was mistaken.
-from the Chair. And the staff recommendations, the reference to drainage, providing a sealed as PDF of an as-built demonstrating, all approved plantings, et cetera, et cetera, and draining, drainage relative to property lines and easements, is recommendation number six, not recommendation number seven?
I was on the wrong, wrong recommendations. Thank you for the correction. And then, and to, thank you to Board Member Cepanello pointing out that in the review of comments on page five of six is a request to have some like mitigate, some clear mitigation that you're going to put in. So just something to that effect. Okay.
Excuse me, through the Chair. I think if there's any negative to this, it's going to be the runoff to the property below it. So it, it, I'm not sure if specifically says it in here, but I would like to include a condition, which I seem to think you're, you're in agreement with, is to have a stormwater management plan so that it does not impact the neighbors.
So I, I will go back to my conservation, say a stormwater management plan has a specific request that's legally. So I think that's, that's like, what's like numbers, the engineer and infiltration. And we don't normally require that for a single family. So I think what we could say is, every attempt to capture the runoff from the roof and to recharge accordingly.
That's fine with me. Yeah. And we could add that condition, if you're all right with that.
Sure.
Sure. I mean, you know, you wouldn't want the neighbor constructing-
No, definitely not. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's just capture it. It just basically means we're going to make sure it gets captured.
Sure.
And make sure it gets discharged in a safe way.
Capture it. Have an army.
Board Member Barnhagen?
Through the Chair. So how would that condition, how would you like that condition to be ordered? Because we're adding this condition now, right?
Yeah. So I guess it's seven now.
And it would be- Now, you were right. You just-
Yeah, it's, it's to require that all roof runoff get, get put into a drain and discharged either into a rain barrel, or some sort of like process to dissipate the sort of discharge. And if possible, to, to have it run towards the street.
Got it. No problem.
If it's, you know, just not running towards the-
Excuse me, could, could we reword that to just say eliminate any runoff that could negatively impact the neighbors?
That's now another standard that we're adding.
Okay.
As legal ramifications.
Just leave it. I'm sure you'll do a good job.
We would, we would then require a single family to get an engineer to prove that.
I'm in favor of it either way. However you word it, and just make sure nobody-
If, if we require them to basically take all the rough roof runoff and do something with it, I think that's the important thing. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I offer? I, because I feel like I've heard this language previously, is to capture roof runoff to the maximum extent possible?
Yeah.
And recharge? I don't know. Wordsmithy. Something of that nature.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think, right.
With, with, if at all possible, redirecting any remaining stormwater runoff towards the front. And not, not towards the street and not the neighbor.
All sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave. Yeah.
Could I make a comment through the Chair, please? So something like this, I would recommend that he put in some type of cul-de-sac system in the backyard. I don't think running into the front makes any sense. But unless there's room in the front yard, that you can put a drywell of sort, is what we're asking for here, is some sort of drywell. For rain barrels, and just my opinion, rain barrels, I don't know, you got to do something with the water. Once the 55-gallon rain barrel fills up, what do you do with that? You can't even move it. But some sort of in-ground infiltration system, we can do a drywell system of some sort, or some sort of cul-de-sac system that you can purchase, that has a engineered plan, design that comes with it.
Yeah, I definitely could, you know, with, you know, drywall-
Anything like that will alleviate the water runoff.
Front and back, if it's necessary.
I guess it's, it's a big expense for a single family. That's my only reticence to it. But you're right, that's the only way to require it's not going to runoff, right? Is to have something recharge after-
Through, through the Chair, the other thing is really, gutters on a requirement for, you know, there's, I mean, there's the question about site plan here with the 15% slope. And I've looked at this a little bit with Marcus. I, I don't know how they can do this without creating a slope. Looking at some of the pictures now, looking at the, it almost looks flat. So if you go back to site plan, and you provide a site plan, they are most definitely going to ask you to put this in.
Yeah.
And they're going to ask you for an engineered plan. So you're going to have to have some more details if, if site plan in fact is a requirement because of that 15% issue in the back, the trigger for new construction. So you got a couple of things you got to look at as the owner, how you want to resolve that. If there was, if you weren't doing a walkout there, and there's no site develop, no site issue in terms of slope, and there's no gutter requirement, the water runs off the roof, hits the land, and it goes into the land like everybody wants it to stay, the water retention on that property. So you, you've got some thinking, I think-
Sure.
-before your final building permit.
Right. So I think, I feel, so for myself, again, speaking just for myself, I feel comfortable saying that we're asking for them to figure, for you to figure out how to capture off the roof and dissipate it, which the rain barrel just, it just slows it down, right? So instead of it all coming at once, it collects it, I have a rain barrel, it just, we loosen it a little, it goes a little bit. So it's not like fallout, go bonkers in the neighbors. It is a mitigation. It is not a stop of water runoff, for sure. Plus, if it's raining really hard, it's just going to sheet off anyway, right? There's nothing we can do. So if you, so I think what we're saying is, either there isn't space for a walkout, which is my suspicion, and then you're going to have to, you're going to have to figure that out, or you're going to want to create space for a walkout, and then you're going to have to grade a little, and that's going to trigger the planning board's site plan review.
Got it.
So either way, we need a plan that sort of takes into account, like, that's the grading, that you, that we think is going to happen. If I'm comfortable moving this forward with some language around recharge, and if you don't have the space to like create a walkout, I think I'm comfortable saying like, the plan is fine, it's a single family there, you're going to have a basement that's not graded, right? You're just going to go straight across. That feels comfortable to me. Maybe you do have the space, and we're all wrong. We're just looking at it, and you actually do have it. I don't know. That's what the plan will tell us, some sort of plan. So we'll need that before you get it.
Sounds good.
Through the Chair, can I?
Yeah.
Can I offer some modified language?
Please.
So, starting off with 1A, we're asking that the applicant demonstrate that a 15% or larger slope is not being disturbed. So typically, an engineer or surveyor will stamp it to say grades in excess of 15% are not being disturbed, i.e. you don't need site plan approval, which the condition as it reads will not require a grading plan to be prepared. I think we should add it to say, demonstrate that a 15% or larger slope is not being disturbed on the proposed projects. If it is, provide an engineered grading plan, which will, would be required for site plan review, but if you wanted to put that in. And then, on the discussion around infiltration, I think we could add 1D to say, the applicant shall infiltrate roof runoff to the maximum extent practical, demonstrating on the plan either use of drywells, subsurface infiltration unit, rain barrels, or some other measure to reduce, slow the rate of runoff. So there's some flexibility in what they want to use on-site, at the board's discretion, if that language is acceptable.
That works for me.
I adore it.
Okay. A lot of heads. Great job.
And then, I guess the last thing on, on the waivers guy tonight, there's three waivers here. Are you asking for the waivers?
Are you requesting the waivers?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Then I, I have no problem moving this forward with all the-
Board Member Torcono?
I have no comment.
Board Member Sacco?
I give me no comment.
Okay. Well, then I'll take and entertain a motion.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, Board Member Brahmov?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Cepanello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for 74 Summer Hill Avenue, for Lot 2, a variance for relief of 1,526 square feet from the 7,000 square-foot minimum lot area requirement for a single-family detached dwelling in an RL7 zone, including the conditions of approval and the staff recommendations on page three of six of the staff memo, and amended for the addition to 1A, and the addition of 1D, as stated by Rose in this meeting. And for the waivers, as requested on page four of six of the staff memo.
Is there a second?
I do second the motion.
Sorry, is there a second? Yeah. Okay. Board Member Brahmov?
My vote is yes.
Board Member Cepanello?
Yes.
Board Member Cortez?
Yes.
Board Member Torcono?
Yes.
My vote's yes. Thank you so much. All right.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, but not least, 80 Prudential Streets.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Patrick Flynn. I'm here for the petitioner applicant, Matthew Tolak. Before you, we submit an application for a variance for lot size on 80 Prudential Road. There is a 7,000-square-foot minimum requirement. We're asking for a relief in the amount of 600 square feet total to create the buildable lot. That's what we have before you here tonight.
Okay. City?
Through the Chair, this is Rose Russell on the Planning Division. So before you is an application for 80 Prudential Avenue. We're in the RS7 zoning district. And there's an existing single-family house on the lot, and the applicant seeks to divide the lot and create a second lot to the south, which has 6,400 square feet of lot area. You need 7,000 to accommodate a single-family dwelling. That's the only available development in the RS7 zoning district. So granting a variance would create a developable lot here. They would need to file an approval not required plan through the planning board to divide the lot. But after that, it would basically, they would be able to seek a building permit. So you're considering 600 square feet of relief. And this is kind of an unusual circumstance. The plan they provided does not show the location of a house. It's, one of the waivers they're seeking, it's on page four, they're seeking to waive the location or buildings, location of buildings or use of the property where a variance or special permit is requested in distances from adjacent buildings. It's not often that we go through the waivers. A lot of them are items that really aren't required to be reflected on a plan. Things like percentage of the lot covered by principal and accessory buildings, it's up to the board to determine whether they want to grant that waiver. But the things like that is a little less, it's pretty infrequent that anyone would provide that information. It's a little outdated, coming from the zoning board rules and regulations. But in this case, you're really just considering whether that 600 square feet should be granted to allow the construction of a single-family here, without seeing what's proposed. They did provide some architectural plans, but without seeing a civil plan depicting the driveway width, the percentage of impervious surface, all those kind of things that we typically look for in review. We can't confirm if it's zoning compliant. So as long as the applicant ensures that it is, they would be able to proceed, once the land's divided to build. But it's just, we can't confirm it at this time. So it's really just the board considering if they're comfortable. Since it's a single-family zoning district, that's all they can build. They could construct an ADU on the existing building to get another unit on there, or in this fashion, they'd be able to consider, or they'd be able to construct an ADU on both lots. But the architectural plans we have show a two-story, three-bedroom, two-car garage. And then just the existing lot does not have sufficient lot area to divide it for any additional use. So there is no by- use, so there is no buy right option. We did include some recommendations of approval, so we asked that the applicant show the location of a building, any driveways, walkways, landscaping, all site improvements to confirm they do comply with the zoning ordinance, we had asked for some of the existing trees on what's going to be Lot 2 to be preserved, to reflect the limited work, and appropriate tree protection fencing, so wanting to see some of the trees on site be maintained. And then we just asked that any trees that have to be removed are replaced at a ratio of one to one with two-and-a-half inch caliber trees, so, yeah. Happy to answer any question the board has, I'll leave it there.
Rose, I have a question. So, just to clarify for the board, the applicant has come forward with a request to subdivide 80 Prudential into two different lots, and asking for a variance in accordance with that for 600 square feet from the 7,000 square feet, but we are considering just that, just that sort of bifurcation, if they were to come forward and submit a plan that also needed for, like, that didn't meet sort of the setback and other requirements, they would have to then come back before us again and ask for it specifically for that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And additionally, actually, I think that's my only question at the moment, okay. I see people here, there's nothing else here, so I'm guessing you're here for 80 Prudential. So if you could just come forward, state your name and city of residence, and please, yep, that's it, thank you so much. Just make sure the green light's on.
Hi, my name is Bill Keely, I live right across from this lot, live at 75 Prudential Road.
Thank you.
To me, this is a beautiful neighborhood, that's a beautiful piece of property, you put another house in there, it's going to be like the TV commercial with the little girls in her backyard, swings and hits a wall, hits a wall, it's going to infringe on both properties, it's going to infringe on that home that's there now on the property, and it's going to infringe on the next-door neighbor on the other corner, on their property as well. I don't see that there is enough room for this, I mean, just looking at that construction there, the reason probably why he didn't give you an exact, specific spot for the house, because I don't believe it'll fit in there. You know, I think the property lines are going to be too tight, I don't know if they have the setback in the back of the house, once they put this building in there, that they're supposed to have. And to me, I really don't want to see it, I want to see it stay as a single-family home, I want to be able to see kids play out there, and you put a house there, there's not going to be any yard for either one of them. That's my concern.
Thank you very much. Just state your name, city of residence, please.
Good evening, everyone, Sean Blake, 177 Quinnipoxet, Worcester. To echoes Bill's sentiment, you're missing some context here in terms of the adjacent properties. I agree it will not fit, I agree that the proposed building is entirely out of context for the neighborhood. The estate in question formerly, currently is property of the Tolak family. I did some work for Beverly before she passed, she's a very nice lady. Myself and a couple of the neighbors have actually been maintaining the yard since Beverly passed last year. The petitioner was out of state, and has really let it sort of stagnate. Gutters are falling off, there's animals in the attic, it needs more attention than it's being given. His realtor house was in possession of an offer from an adjacent property owner to buy the lot without building. I think, depending on how late everybody wants to stay tonight, you're going to find out that nobody in the neighborhood wants another property there. It's not going to fit, we're not a neighborhood where you can tell what everybody's having for dinner. I won't expand on that, I simply don't think it's going to fit, and I don't think it would suit the neighborhood. There's a lot of residential activity, we also have two existing properties that are currently undergoing construction. From 7 till 4 every day, Monday through Saturday, usually all we hear is bobcats and backhoes and hammers and compressors. One more piece of construction is only going to extend that through next year, most of us could do without it. It's a quiet neighborhood, I hope you've driven it, I hope you've given it a look. The picture on the right here makes it look like there's plenty of room there, that's why it was taken from the perspective it has, there isn't plenty of room there. There's no context to the houses on the backside on Winston, and the house on the corner of Scranton and Winston is right by the post here you see on the right, the fence post. There isn't enough room, it's as simple as that. I understand the family wanting to maximize the estate, but with all due respect, you can't see it from Minnesota, and that's where the plaintiff is, so. They have an offer for the lot to sell it to an adjacent property, I think they should run with it, they don't need a buildable property there, it's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just state your name and city of residence.
Chris Rich, 5 Scranton Road, Worcester. This is the first time I've been at one of these meetings, but I'm not unfamiliar with what goes on in this building, I too have served on boards here in the past, so I appreciate the work that you do, sincerely. I actually was, while I was sitting here, I realized 25 years ago this month, I bought my property on Scranton Road, my wife and I bought that property with the intention of raising a family in a neighborhood that I actually was born and raised in, so I've known Worcester my entire life, specifically the Burnco neighborhood. When I look at a piece of property like this, it brings me back to when I was younger, looking at all the, all the double lot properties there, it was just a hallmark of the neighborhood. And, and this is a unique property too in that neighborhood that I'm in now. The whole consideration of, obviously, this is kind of leading us towards this path of, you know, another, another potential property going, you know, another structure going up in this space. I'll let go of the sentiment so far, not a ton of room there, if you've driven by it, you see it's, it's pretty tight, it's almost 10% less than the size of the required lot size, more or less. The lot sizes in the neighborhood are not terribly large to begin with, and I do think that the space is part of the character of that neighborhood that we've all come to really enjoy. But on a more, you know, logistical challenge, you know, with this neighborhood, Prudential Road, not a terribly wide road to begin with, plowing can be an issue, getting past there is an issue, parking, in the city of Worcester, I've known for many years, parking is, off-street parking is a huge challenge, we don't have a ton of it, building more structures in an already small, you know, neighborhood is just going to exacerbate that problem for all the residents. I, but, St. Mark's Road is to my back, there's a property there, they have cars in the front yard, they have cars in the driveways, cars in the street, it's, it doesn't take a whole lot for the entire layout of that area to get messy and get messy really quick, so I think we're all really concerned about what happens next, right? I think, given the circumstances of how this property is currently stated, I think there are other alternatives that should be seriously considered, instead of going down this particular road, which we're just going to all be back here again, honestly, I think that's where this is headed. So, in addition to the parking challenges, you know, that tree that you see pictured there, that was, that tree was put there because of the Asian Longhorn beetles, which decimated that neighborhood, all very familiar with that, right? So, all these things considered, I think it makes it really difficult for us to want to get on board with, you know, another, you know, splitting the property up, I think that there's other ways to come up with a solution that makes sense for the, for the now owner of that property, which also was mentioned isn't, is not in the area. Yeah, so, you know, we have dirt roads in the neighborhood too, there's certainly infrastructure in the area that could stand to get updated, adding another house is just going to, again, further add burdens to the immediate areas, so. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. You're all very orderly, I really appreciate this, thank you.
Hi, my name is Vincent Rouge, I live at 5 Winston Road, I live directly behind the property, so, I've been there for 20 years, so I've known the property for 20 years. There's not enough room to put a house there, it's narrow as it is, and I don't want to see another house in a cramped neighborhood already. I would rather see it the way it is, the way it's intended to be, looking for another variance to, to a rule that's already there, and you're trying to sub this rule and make it, you know, a buildable lot when it shouldn't be built on. We have enough houses in our neighborhood, they already put four houses on St. Mark Street, there was a house there, they tore that down to build four new houses, and that was too much to begin with, so. I think as a, as someone that lives behind the house, I don't want to have construction. They're already putting an addition diagonal from me behind there, and it's just constant noise. If they're going to tear this house and put two new houses on there, which sounds like that they want to do, which I think is crazy, I just don't think that we need another house in this neighborhood, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood to begin with, so, I oppose it. Now, there's another proposal that I think's on the board here, that, that could be possibly, you know, someone retaining the property but not developing it, I'm for that, but to develop and put on a house on it, I just don't think it's good for the neighborhood, so, that's where I stand, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alana Frederick, and I am from Worcester. I own the property on the corner of Scranton and Prudential. I share the same sentiment as most of my neighbors, you know, I think it's really hard for us too, especially to have no plan, to really even feel like we can make informed decisions about this process, because they're, you know, for right now, we're, they're seeking a variance for the total area, but the way it kind of measures from our house, it sort of seems like it isn't just the total area that would be impacted, it might also be the frontage or the side yard, depending, and so now that's kind of why you have this like, not straight property line through the middle, I think it's to avoid having to ask for that in addition. It also seems like the original plan from like 1938 did have this as two lots, but all of the changes that have occurred from then on have all been to make the lots bigger and not smaller for the last like 90 years. I think there's 22 out of the 28 properties that are Scranton Road and over, towards the northeast, that have all changed, and all of those have been in the direction of adding additional square footage. So, it's, we have a lot of concerns, and I, it feels like there's not necessarily even enough information at this time to really speak on what the future even is of this property, like, what they're even asking for, I don't know if the plan even is still to turn, to tear down that property, that, the house that exists currently, and to build a different one in addition, or if it's to retain the current house as it stands. So I think that's just one of our, a few of our many concerns at this time, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I see more people who have not had a chance to speak, I want to make sure everyone feels heard, so, if you'd like to come forward and speak on this item, please do so. Okay, is there anybody online? I see some urging to speak, so I'll give, please take the opportunity, you came all the way here and sat through this, so you might as well speak.
I'm Tammy McKelk, I live on Winston Road in Worcester. Anyone who lives in Worcester knows that the Burnco area is an old, established neighborhood. My, one of my concerns would be that if this is approved, would that then open the door down the road for more of this? And it would completely change the neighborhood. I think it, you know, this would benefit one person, and he lives in Minnesota. As far as the people who live in the neighborhood, there is no benefit to this at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, sure, go ahead, come forward, just state your name and city of residence.
My name is Sean Calvo, I live at 10 Winston Road in Worcester. I was talking with one of the other neighbors that is not here today about a similar property that was developed in the area, that was on a relatively restricted lot in this area, and, you know, even after all of the approval went through, it's a smaller house in the neighborhood compared to the other ones, and so, there was just the issue of, after all of the work that was put through, kind of, you know, changing the space, it didn't, it took a long time to sell, so even on top of all of that time, then the space was unused when it, you know, could have potentially been put to better use through alternate options instead. And I otherwise also agree with the sentiments that all of my neighbors have echoed as well.
Thank you, yes, a new comment too, I really appreciate that, thank you very much. Okay. Go ahead, once, go ahead twice.
Ryan Hallett, I live in Worcester. I'm, there's only one other thing I want to add on to this, and is the aspect of hardship. In this case scenario, there is no hardship in getting this variance, the whole point of getting the variance is so that they can sell the lot for more money. There, like the previous people have said, there are offers on the table for, to buy the lot as is, so, that's all I have to add.
Thank you very much. Great. Is that everyone? Online? Okay. If you could talk a little bit about what the plans are for the current, for the sort of current building, and a little bit about sort of the city and other folks' questions about like, like, lot, frontage, and sort of plan for what's going there.
Absolutely. As you can see by the, the plans submitted, all the required setbacks and frontage are within the required distances, lengths, and amounts, so those are all, all within zoning. The house, the design has been proposed, it's a single-family use, which is, what is allowed, there's nothing obtrusive about the home, there's nothing architecturally awkward about the home. Matter of fact, this neighborhood has many different style homes in it, this neighborhood also has plenty of houses that are on lots that are even smaller than that, I believe neighborhood behind it is, the street behind it is only less than 6,000 square foot lots on some of those homes, so this is not a detriment to the neighborhood, nor is it different than any other house that could be found in and around that neighborhood in terms of the style, the location, or the size of the proposed lot. I have no information, or nor have been told, that this house, the original house would be torn down, I have not received anything that would tell me that that would be the case. The proposed owner is a builder who has been for the city before, as far as I know, has built houses and worked on things in this neighborhood. I am aware that some of the people here may have proposed, or at least one of the people may have proposed something, that has not been brought to me as the attorney, but it's really not at that stage to do so. I don't think it's in my client's best interest at this point to entertain that, I'm sure it's, so less than I understand the concerns, but this does in fact meet the requirements or close to what we have, the relief is minimal, it's de minimis in terms of the amount of relief that we're seeking, where it meets every other zoning requirement there is, there is a need for housing in the city, this helps with that. Excuse me. So there's nothing out of the ordinary with, with this, with this property altogether. Also, I should add, the house that's proposed would of course be built with inspectional services that's in the city of Worcester, that my, my client's aware, and we are aware that there would be other issues at that point in time that the builder would have to obviously maintain, working with the, the folks here in the inspectional services department to make sure that the property met the requirements as, within the building code, as needed, as well as anything else regarding construction, construction times, construction debris, things of that nature, to make sure it's all in compliance with that, we already have that set up here in the city, they do a good job, and my client is a builder here and would comply with all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So whenever, I'll go first and then, so the, the board will sort of discuss it, and then we'll go from there. So, whenever I'm sort of thinking about a property, the first thing I always look to is like, what's the history of the neighborhood, what's the history of the properties, what has, sort of. What has, sort of what was intended for these properties? And I also found the plans from 1938 in which there was already supposed to be a line there, and that's actually, to me, what should be happening. There, most of the properties in this neighborhood are less square feet than what is being asked to build here. Most of the properties are single-family homes on smaller square feet than is currently being asked to build a single-family home in a, in a, in a square foot. So like, the request is to build a single-family home where there's other single-family homes on property with more space than most people have in this neighborhood. So it's not the case that it's, and if they, and if they are too close, then they would trigger a variance request, and they would have to come before, and they'd have to make the case, why did you try to build something when you said you had enough space, right? They would have to make that case. So Worcester has actually, I would say, overly restrictive. We are one of the most restrictive places to build single-family homes. You need a ton of space on the side, on the front, all those things to build a single-family home. And they're saying that they have the space, and they probably do, because this is actually a lot of space. Which is why when they developed this neighborhood, they put out plots, and the plots were all, they all had together. There was a movement to merge plots. There's actually a thing about it. And we are recognizing that we need to go in the other direction because there needs to be more housing. There is this thing that happens that everyone understands that prices are too high, and they can't afford to move. Their children can't afford to move into their neighborhoods, but no one wants to build next to them. And unfortunately, that's an incongruence. Somebody has to build someplace. And I think as the zoning board, we should be agreeing to build single-family homes on, in lot size, square footage, that's the same size as other square footage in the neighborhood, that looks the same as the other square footage, that was designed to have a property on it, but it never got built. That, to me, is where we should be putting single-family homes. It's actually a pretty straightforward case, in my opinion, about that. I, so for me, it's a straightforward case. Like, this is plenty of space. They say they don't need any of the frontage, side yards, or setbacks. I could see that on this property. There's certainly plenty of space to do it. And I think there should be single-family homes where there's single-family homes. Unless we're going to go to a system where profit is not the way we're doing things, which like, that's a whole other conversation, where we're not asking people to think about profit, or make profit, or like, that the only people who get to benefit from something need to actually like, live in that location. Like, that's a whole different system of government and economy that we currently have. The current system is people build things. They try to make money on it. They sell it to other people. That's how I got my home. Somebody built a home. I got a three-decker. I bought it. Somebody made profit on that. So like, that's the current, like, I don't know. That's where we're in. We're in a place where we need housing. There should have been housing in this place. It never got built. There's an opportunity to build it, and they think they can do it without the square footage. So to me, this is straightforward. Board member Abra.
Through the chair. I agree with you. And I'll just leave it at that.
Board member Cipinello.
Through the chair. This is a moment where I feel like a judge, and I wish I could just take it under advisement for a moment. Ultimately, the relief that's before us is 600 square feet from the 7,000 square foot minimum lot area requirement. Given that there's no definitive plan in front of us, we can't say if there's any other relief being requested. That said, I do take a great and long pause when eight people have come before us, and there's more people who haven't even spoke. So at this moment, I'm undecided on this matter.
Board member Cortez.
Through the chair. I also agree with the explanation given by the chair. And in addition to that, this is a buildable lot. And people have the right to use the land and build it according to building requirements and so forth. I, again, this is also, and I can understand the concerns by the Abadarsia, that they don't want to have another house in the neighborhood. If, if this is not built now, that's a buildable lot, someone else comes in, and there may be other lots around there that they're going to do. I did hear that there are other two, two other houses being built close by there. I thought I heard that. So if, if two other people had the right to build somewhere around there in those neighborhoods, in the neighborhood, why isn't that a third, a third person who has a buildable lot, a good size, not have the right to use it? What, what I do say is that we don't have a complete plan of what actually, what type of a structure is going to be placed there that would be similar or in accordance to the other neighborhood houses or anything like that. So I also, I'm also kind of a, kind of a posia whether, whether, you know, I'm okay with using the land and build it. What I'm concerned now is what type of a house is going to be built there, and maybe we need that plan to be presented sometime. I'm not sure if at the same time that we approve of the division of the lot, or is, or is that a separate, or is that a separate then request for the building?
We would have to continue, I think, to request it.
Yeah.
Through the chair. The way we have it worded is that they provide the plan depicting the building on the site as a condition of approval. If the board thinks it's important that we get that before approving it, we would have to continue it to the next meeting.
So with that, I, I'll be moving, moving forward.
Okay. Would you, are you requesting that they, are you requesting a continuance to get?
I'm requesting a, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's very clear.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Board member Torcono.
I'm very undecisive. I don't have the plan, so I can't make a decision.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. I cut you off. I didn't give you a chance to respond. Go ahead.
It's mine. I apologize. I should have waited, but I just couldn't understand. But now I understand.
Yeah. So the request is?
You're in favor of a continuance to get a plan? Is that?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you so much.
That's correct. Board member Barnhagen.
Through the chair. You know, I'm not going to be voting on this, so, you know, I'm taking it for what it's worth, but.
It's worth a lot.
It's worth a lot. Okay. Thank you. I share, board member Cipinello's concerns about this. I can see both sides. This is not easy. You know, nobody wants, if you live in the immediate neighborhood, nobody ever wants more development around you. Even if on a bigger scale, you might think to yourself, you know, Worcester needs more housing. And so, you know, kind of in a perfect world, you know, somewhere else, people are building single-family homes. And this is only, this is less than 10% of the square footage needed, which is not a big variance request as far as what we see on a meeting-to-meeting basis. We've granted requests for much more than that. So that is correct, that this is a lot that is buildable, that they're only asking to do a single-family home in an area that has all single-family homes. And Worcester does need more housing. And this, depending on how the, how it's built, it could be a good addition to the neighborhood other than the fact that there's one more house in the neighborhood, which is the main concern that everyone here has. The fact that so many neighbors have come out for this, you know, it does cause me some, some concerns about that, that the fact that there is universal opposition to this. But this is a lot that historically would have had a single-family home on it. It's not asking for a lot of relief compared to what we normally do, and we need single-family homes. So, you know, I don't know.
Board member Sacco.
Yeah, I think we're, Mr. Barnhagen, you summed it up perfectly. And we definitely appreciate on the board, when anyone comes forward, any Abada, any neighbor, and just expresses their opinion and their point of view. But I do think that the, you know, requirements are pretty minimal they're asking, and I would definitely be on board to move forward.
Through the chair. I mean, I do, we're going to see a plan at some point. If it, if it needs any kind of variance or special permit, it'll be before us. So if it's not before us again, then it will have met every single requirement that the city of Worcester has for a single-family home in this neighborhood. So, I mean, that's one thing.
It sounds like there's going to be a request for a plan to get, to think. So I think at that point, it won't happen. Yes, please go forward to state your name again for the record, and direct any comments directly towards me, please.
My name is Bill Curly. I live at 75 Prudential Road. What have they been paying the taxes on the last 50 years they've been living there? One lot. So for you to say to us, in the neighborhood, that's a buildable house lot, the taxes have been paid on one, on RS7, okay? The other addition, the other house that's having construction is putting on an addition. He's putting on an addition to his house and had the room to do it. This, to me, once again, doesn't need to be a double lot. It should stay the way it is. Because taxes on this house have been paid on one lot, not two. I mean, it's, and I'm going to ask you this, board members. Would you live there? Would you live there? Because there will be no room for your children to play. You want them playing in the street with no sidewalks? I mean, think about this. Yes, they, they're looking for a money grab. They live out in Minnesota, okay? But we don't have to give it to them. We don't have to give it to them here. And for you guys to sit there, I know it's your job to do this, but I want you to think of that. I want you to look at that lot and look what they're proposing, and think about if you would live there, if you had children. Would you, would you really want to live there? And that's what's going to happen. That's what's going to happen if you grant it. It's going to be so congested in that area, you may never even sell that new house you're putting up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Yep, go ahead.
Chris Rich, Worcester. As Bill was talking there, reminded me of something else, too. You know, the plans for this neighborhood, yes, were done in 1938. I think we can all agree, the world was a vastly different place. Worcester was a vastly different place then. A lot of that neighborhood in Burnco used to be farmland, right? So while true, we can go back to what the people who wrote those plans back in the day considered what that neighborhood was, we, the residents, have made that neighborhood what it is. So while yes, 1938, almost 100 years ago, precedent may help inform a decision that needs to be made here respectfully, things have changed. Thank you.
Thank you. So at the very least, we're going to request if the applicant is amenable or a continuation. So there will be further discussion of this, and there will be a plan then for us to react to rather than just sort of a property line. So if the applicant is amenable to it?
That's acceptable to us.
Okay. I'm going to request somebody from the board to make a motion for us to continue this to the October 6th board meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue 80 Prudential Street to the October 6th meeting.
Is there a second?
So move.
On the motion, board member Brahma.
My vote is yes.
Board member Cipinello.
Yes.
Board member Cortez.
Yes.
Board member Torcono.
Yes.
My vote's yes. Okay. So for residents, you will not get another formal notice. So please do contact the planning division so they can keep you updated. Should they decide to ask for a continuance at the next board meeting, they can tell you, yes, it's going to move forward on the October 6th or some other later date. And if you have other thoughts in the meantime, we do obviously take them very seriously. So please do communicate those to the planning division, and we do take them into consideration. And thank you all so much for your time and for an orderly conversation. I do very much appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, although, Shanks ready to leave. Communications, we don't have any. We'll skip discussion of board policies and procedures